The City of Rowlandwood, City Council will come to order Wednesday, July sixteenth, twenty twenty-five at six o'clock P M. And we will begin with roll call.
Brooke Brown.
Phil McDuffie.
Sarah Hudson.
Gavin Masagel, being a quorum present, we will move on to agenda item number two. A discussion update on the F Y twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. This is our second or third, I guess, third maybe, work session on this upcoming budget cycle. And I'll kind of review just for the record where we've been for the, for those listening at home or who may listen later. If you'll recall, council, in the first, in the first work session, we kind of went through exceptional items and and had an opportunity to look at all of our different funds and a review of our different funds and let the record reflect that Councilman Gleschin is on the dais.
On time.
Yes, so are we. And then last, last meeting, we went through additionally some of those items. And then we are set this evening to go over, I'll give you a quick recap on some of the budget action request worksheets that you're familiar with. If you recall, council, we had a number of items that we highlighted in yellow. Those were items that we were still, are still outstanding for us to be able to fill in the blanks. We're still waiting on some numbers. We continue to narrow that down and I'll go over that with you. And then this evening, our main goal is twofold. One is to share with you the revenue estimates. So we've done the expense side of the ledger in the last workshop. This evening, we will focus on the revenue side of the ledger and go through those items with you. And then also, we'll have a more formal presentation and walk through the various exceptional items that we know of to date. And go over those. You will not be asked to make decisions on those exceptional items this evening, but allow you to digest those exceptional items for the next thirty days. And then we will be taking some straw polls on those items at the next workshop meeting so that we can roll them into the final budget. So that's what's on tap for this evening in this work session. With that, I will move on for a quick recap of the budget action request forms that you're familiar with. These are the expenditure side of, of the budget. And we have those broken out by fund and by department. I'll just quickly go through those. You'll recall in all of the various funds and all the departments, some of the major items that we had highlighted in yellow last, last month were around health insurance, our work comp insurance, our social security and Medicaid tax, and our unemployment comp insurance, as well as T M R S healthcare. Some of those types of expenses were what were still outstanding. Those numbers have now come in and are reflected in these updated budget action requests that are in front of you. So you'll see a lot less yellow marked on these forms or on these Excel spreadsheets as we kind of narrow that down for you. Some that are still outstanding, you'll see like we're still checking some things on sanitation to make sure we've got the number right on our waste and disposal services. Some of the highlighted items like on street maintenance and repairs under depart, uh, Fund one hundred, Department thirty. We still have a highlight there on the, that three hundred thousand, just showing you that we're carrying that forward from last year's budget to this year's budget. You'll have an opportunity to make some decisions on exceptional items related to that particular one so we can fill it in finally next month. We had a question last month on the computer software and support and under our police department, under Fund one hundred, Department forty. I think we told you at that time that the eighty thousand five hundred, which was a forty-nine percent increase, was probably actually not correct. And we did confirm that was, that was not, some of those costs for all of the departments were wrapped up into that P D number. So that will come down to the regular level of fifty-four. I think we're just waiting on the final number on that. Those are, those are the major highlights. I did go back into the parks department and add some additional funding, added ten thousand in materials, just so we can have some additional dollars available for our public works department for materials for the park. So I just noted that's a change from, from last month. We're still waiting on, in our water department and waste our water departments, we're still waiting on a few numbers related to our transfer of utility billing. That's our half percent of the total expenses for the utility billing department. So as we finalize our numbers in these departments, we'll be able to take those highlights off of the worksheets. That's about it. There's, you'll see a, of far fewer yellow highlights. And then next month, we hope to have all of those numbers filled in that we're able to do so for you so that when you adopt your final budget, all of those will be finalized. Any questions on expenditures? Okay, with that, we will move on to the revenues. This is, I think everyone has this sheet. So the top sheet is the, is a list of your current property taxes, four B sales tax, city sales tax, utility, electric utility franchise fee, court funds, commercial park permits, water sales, and wastewater. These are not, this is to give you a sense of the five-year averages for all of our major revenue sources. These are not all of the revenue, these are our major revenue sources. And this top sheet just gives you a sense of the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty numbers, twenty twenty, twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-three, twenty-four. It's really just for your reference. If you have questions as we go forward and look at these revenue, these will be reflected in what we're about to review. So if you are wondering, well, how much have we spent historically, this is what gives you those, that, those data points, in case you're wondering. Let's start with, and these are again broken out in the same manner as the expenditures by fund and by department. And we will just go through, Abel, if, can I get you to come to the microphone just in case they have questions? I can probably answer most of them, but some of, some of these revenue line items are, not used that very often. I'll be able to answer the major ones, but we'll just kind of go through these from the top. So general fund one hundred, administration, Department ten. Your, your top item there and, and line item four thousand is our property taxes. This is, this has a yellow highlight because we still have not received those final estimates from the county or from the, from Travis Cad. So we have just filled in for now, last year's number of one million, six forty-four, nine forty-eight. Abel, do you know, have, you have a sense of when we'll have those final numbers in?
It'll be the first week in August.
Okay, so by the time we meet again in our next work session, we'll have these final numbers. Again, this is why we're not making decisions on exceptional items and that sort of thing, because we can't give you a definitive number on what we think our revenue is going to look like. But it should be somewhere in the ballpark of one point six.
Do we know, do we know why we haven't gotten all of our tax income?
Uh, the certified rolls don't come out till July twenty-fifth.
No, not the projected, I mean, what we received this year, we should have received already.
Yeah, we, we always, we're actually running ahead of where we usually are, right?
We're at ninety-eight percent right now.
We're at ninety-eight percent. And I think at this time last year, we were like, like at nine.
Ninety-seven, so we're about thirty-two thousand under what we budgeted for the current year. So out of the one points, almost one point seven mil, we haven't collected about thirty-two thousand.
And I think the simple answer to your question is just some people don't pay their taxes or don't pay them on time.
I was gonna say, I thought the due date was January.
Yeah.
Unless commercial has a different, a different payment.
Which is a good segue, which is a good segue to the next line item, which is forty-twenty penalty and interest. And that penalty and interest is for that reason, right?
Correct, it's, uh, taxes collected from prior years or late, late, late collections, anything after January thirty-first.
And that is, we did drop that slightly. We had budgeted last year ten thousand and we're only seeing about five thousand in actuals. So we did, we dropped that to an estimated five thousand in the upcoming budget for revenue. Our gross receipts, which is our gas tax, we did, we're running it a little bit to the good on that. And so we did raise it slightly to twenty-five thousand. We're ahead of collections on that. Telecom tax is slightly down and, and actuals, we're projecting it to be around fifteen thousand. We budgeted it twenty, so we did drop that to fifteen thousand in this budget, for this upcoming budget. Mixed beverage tax is running a little bit, a little bit higher than projected. We did raise that slightly to six thousand. Everybody needs to get to Pepitas and drink some margaritas at your earliest convenience. Our four B sales tax at one seventy-five is what we budgeted last time. We're actually running pretty significantly to the good on that with an excess of about thirty-seven thousand projected. So we did raise that slightly to two, two hundred thousand going forward for the next cycle. Our city sales tax, we budgeted previously at seven hundred thousand. It is also coming in very healthy to the good at eight forty-eight, a hundred and forty-eight thousand ahead of schedule. So we did raise that slightly by a hundred thou, or not slightly, we raised it a hundred thousand, still giving us about forty-eight thousand of wiggle room, conservative wiggle room. And raise that to eight hundred thousand projection for next cycle. Franchise tax, five thousand is running a little bit below what we thought we would have. And so we've rate, we've lowered that to twenty-five hundred. Utility, electric utility franchise fee at ninety thousand. That is twenty thousand to the good, so we raise that, we split the difference and raise that to a hundred thousand. R C D C administrative fee is standard, I believe the seventy-two thousand is already in their budget and is the same as what we had them pay for administrative fees last time. So that's the same seventy-two. Water fund administration fee, this is just a five percent, this is a statutory allowance of five percent of total water sales. So we're able to plug that in at sixty-two, seven seventy-five. Wastewater is a similar statutory allowance of five percent of wastewater sales, so we're able to pl, go ahead and plug that in at forty, the same forty-five thousand. Solicitation permit fees, we never know how many, what we're gonna have of those. So we've got that budgeted the same one hundred. Interest income, we did drop interest income slightly. We've been doing pretty well on our interest income the last few years with, with rates where they are. But we did drop that slightly in anticipation of potential rate decreases in the coming year. Drop that to from, or no, I guess we left it at the same, because we're actually running hot. So we budgeted at ten, we're projected to bring in fifteen, but we just left it at the same ten. Interest income on checking is pretty marginal. We raised that slightly to fifteen hundred miscellaneous receipts. We really don't budget for miscellaneous items, so we left that at the same fifty, even though we've brought in thirty-seven ninety or projected to have that. And opioid settlement distribution, we are, we are in the settling agreement on the opioid settlement agreement. We never really know what we're gonna get or when we're gonna get it, so we kind of leave that at a, at a moderate five hundred. But we, I think, have gotten fourteen hundred in this previous year, probably we'll get that again. Unexpended balance transfer is not to be budgeted for, A C L revenues is the fifty-five thousand. You saw that reflected on the expenditures at the same fifty-five thousand. It was put into the expenditures for P D and consolidated into P D at fifty-five thousand for expenditures. And then grant revenues, we keep it a line item four, but we don't ever know what grant revenues we're going to have, so we don't budget for them. So your general fund one hundred, administration ten, total discretionary funds estimated right now at about three million dollars. And we'll have, we'll be able to narrow that down for you closer to the actual number once we get the Travis Cad numbers in. Any questions on revenue for the general fund one hundred?
So the wastewater is five percent of what we bill people, right?
Correct. Yeah, it's five percent of gross sales. Correct, I'm saying that correctly, yeah.
Correct.
Gross fees. Okay, moving on to development services, Department fifteen, we have board of adjustment fees, uh, which we typically don't budget for because we don't know what's going to, what's going to transpire in, in our board of adjustment. So we leave that at zero. Tree removal, budgeted that at twenty-five hundred and just left that at the same twenty-five hundred going forward. Inspections, budgeted thirty-five thousand, we're running a little bit short on that, so we dropped it slightly to thirty thousand. That's all the pass-through revenue between expenses and revenues. Building fees at sixty thousand, we're running significantly short on that. Again, not to be worried about because that is a pass-through for our reviews, but we left, we dropped that to twenty-five thousand. Signs at two fifty, application filing fees at five hundred, we raised that slightly. Our notices, our revenue notices, that, those were down, so we put that at a thousand. Most of these are not huge revenue items, as you can see. Those are the highlights. occupancy fifteen hundred, elevation height verification twenty-five hundred. And those are the highlights for development services. Any questions on development services, revenues? All right, moving on to general fund one hundred sanitation, which is Department twenty. Pretty straightforward here of swapping two hundred and fifty dollars of revenue. That's the additional recycling charge, that's for folks who have extra bins, is that right?
Correct.
Moving on to utility billing, which is Department twenty-five, you've got a, a water fund transfer in sixty-four thousand and a water fund transfer in, wastewater fund transfer in sixty-four thousand. That's half the total utility billing expenditures. Again, those, those, those can vary depending on what the expenditure side of the equation turns out to be. Streets, Department thirty, uh, street maintenance transfer fee in. Again, just to recap on this, explain the accounting cycle, if you would, Abel, on how we do this each year.
Every year that, the monies that are not transferred over from street maintenance fund to the street department, the difference is carried back into fund balance, so when you need it in future years, the funds will be available there.
And as you recall, we have not done all of the C I P and we're gonna have more of a discussion around this under exceptional items also. So last year, we, we budgeted four hundred and ninety-four thousand, three hundred and eleven dollars. We have spent, and that's not the, it's not just street paving that's in this budget. And that is why the majority of the unexpended balance, so the under budget of three eighty-two, nine fifty-nine, is because we haven't spent those dollars on the, on the repaving yet, because we're not to that phase yet in the C I P. And so we're just carrying forward that same three eighty-two, nine fifty-nine, which you budgeted in this current cycle. We're just carrying that over to the next cycle. And then we'll have a discussion under exceptional items of maybe adding some more to that from our unexpended balance, from our street fund. As you recall, those dollars go into that fund from the gas tax and we can only spend it on streets. And for a number of years, those dollars have built up into a pretty healthy unexpended balance. We talked about it last year and the year before, we spent some of, we spent some dollars, this council spent some dollars to do our long-term paving analysis from the, from an engineering firm. We have that now on the books. That three eighty-two, nine fifty-nine that we have not spent yet will be to knock out some of those items. We'll look at the unexpended balance that you have in the street fund and maybe add some to that three eighty-nine, or that three eighty-two to do some additional street paving as we wrap up the C I P. We are, we'll talk about this more in the exceptional item tonight. I will need a pretty, we have looked at the, we've looked at the timeline on when you will adopt your final budget. And we've looked at the timeline on when A O Services is scheduled to wrap up their C I P. And I will need a pinky swear from council. If you do want to do some additional dollars, or any dollars, including this three eighty-two. If you do want to utilize some of those funds for additional street paving, we need to move on that pretty quickly on an R F P to get that issued in time to be able to not miss the train with A O and their contractor and the paving. Now, if we miss the, if we miss that train, it's not the end of the world, we can still go back out. My, my working theory is that we could get more bang for our buck if we can get them to do the additional work while they're already mobilized on the C I P. But we would, but it is way over fifty thousand, so we will have to go to bid for it. My suspicion is that A O and/or their contractor would, would be willing to bid on it and would give us a good number and they probably would get it. That's, there's no guarantee that they would, maybe somebody else will come in and give us an even better number. But we, I'll need to have a sense of what council, if council's interested in doing that, because we'll need to move on the R F P probably at the same time or slightly before you adopt your final budget. Yes, ma'am?
Do you have an idea of what, what paving projects would be next?
Yes, they're all prioritized, we, we can look back at that, that study that we had. My guess is, I think the, 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 the most basic recommendation that they had was that, that treatment that they suggested to go over all of the streets to, to extend the life of the current streets. And I don't know what that number would come in, that might eat up the whole four hundred thousand as far as I know. I, I, I don't know what that would be. And so it may be a situation where we put it out to bid and that's all we're able to get done in the first year is to treat all of the streets with that overlay. That was sort of their first recommendation. And then from that, they prioritize the rest of the streets. So my thought would be that we just start chipping away at the priority as they're, as they're laid out.
One, one more question, is this, can these funds just be spent paving? Or for example, if we wanted to redo the culvert at Edgewood, can you, can they be spent for a project like that?
These funds are statutorily prohibited to only be.
Paving?
Paving, well, streets, you could probably get a curb in there, but streets and curbs, basically.
What about our, our parking lot between the pool and the ball fields?
It would not, not for these funds.
Cause it's, is it, has to be a public street?
It has to be a, yeah, throughway, I think.
Would it make sense to get them to give a proposal at the same time on the R F P to like put a little top code on that parking lot?
Yeah, we could have them break that out.
Then we could put it in as an exceptional item if we wanted to do it.
Yeah, you'd probably miss the boat on the exceptional items, but you could have them bid it and then maybe go to R C D C and try to approve a project real quick, yeah. Or, or you could put it in and also just see what that cost would be, right?
The contractor, remind me which contractor this is?
I forget, so A O has a subcontractor that does their paving, do you remember?
It's Lone Star.
Lone Star paving?
Okay.
Yeah, and I've been really impressed with my, I, I felt like what they've done has been a really good job.
I've, I've had residents tell me how nice they've been and how timely and clean they've been.
They seem like they do a really good job, which is kind of why I don't, which is why I would not, I'd like to have them bid this while they're here. Although it doesn't seem like it's a, I may be making a bigger deal out of the mobilization than what is required because they seem to come in and do their thing and pack up and get out in the same day, so it may not be as.
The mobilization. Yeah, the mobilization fee is significant.
Really?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, just transporting in such.
I knew I was right, I knew I was right all along, I should've.
Good call, man.
Don't, don't, don't waver, okay, all right. Okay, so that's streets, we'll talk more in a moment about that. Police, you've got police miscellaneous revenue, which is not much, at two fifty, vehicle operations, which is five hundred. That's when we allow our, our police to take a vehicle and have it leased out somewhere for work. Leos F D S, I always forget what this is, chief.
I know, I reported that chief had to go out to it, she's still a peace officer first and a department head second, so she's on a call. But this is, I think, just Leos funds, I can't remember what she.
Yo, Leos.
It's a grant from the state for training.
Yeah, that's what I said. A grant from the state for training, just like I said. Okay, so that's that at fifteen hundred. Moving on to court, Department fifty, pretty mundane revenues here with the exception of the court fines. We budgeted fifty last year, we're at fifty-two, one fifty-nine this year, so we're pretty much right on track to our estimate. So we left that, that at the same fifty thousand. Parks, Department fifty-five, again, these are pretty basic, the commercial park permits, budgeted, budgeted five thousand last time. We're actually running a little bit to the good at eighty-two seventy, but we went ahead and left it at a conservative five thousand, just in case we lose some of those. Park permits, field lease is by contract, so we left that same thirty-five thousand in. Those are the highlights from parks revenue.
Do we know why the park permit fees are so much lower than they were the last couple of years?
Well, actually, we're showing that they're above, so we budgeted five thousand last year and they're actually at eighty-two seventy this year. So they're actually three thousand, two seventy above where they were last year.
Well, at the twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two was the ten thousand and the next year was eleven-five and then the next year was eleven-three, so.
Yeah, I, my suspicion and Phil may remember this better than, than I do, but.
We, we, we raised our fees and we lost a lot of people renting space?
Yeah, that's what I believe happened.
I don't think the fees were significantly raised, but.
They were at one, I don't remember that.
Yeah, fee structure changed.
Oh, yeah, I'm.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think they changed, then there was some objection, there were letters and things that happened and then they reduced back to try to, basically because we want to continue to serve the citizenry that use those facilities and things, so. I think maybe they were actually reduced.
Okay, under the waste, uh, under the water fund, Fund two hundred, Department sixty. We see those are not large revenues with the exception of the water sales, which we budgeted at one point one last year. We're projected to bring in one point four in water sales this year, so we raised that slightly to one, one million, two fifty. We did look back at the five-year averages on that and it seems like that's probably about right on what we can be suspecting for this coming year. It's all very weather dependent, so it's kind of hard to determine, but we think one, two, five is, is about right. Moving on to the street maintenance fund, three oh one. Moving on to the street maintenance fund, three oh one, Department sixty. This is the street sales tax that we've talked about, we budgeted at one fifty last year. We're at a projected two twenty this year, so we did raise that to two hundred thousand. And projected revenue for this fund. And then the only other item there is the interest income and we left that at two fifty. The next three are the court security fund, the court technology fund and court efficiency fund. These are, these are fees and revenues derived statutorily on the citations that we issue, is that correct, Abel?
That's correct.
And they are very nominal. And we do not have a lot of volume in our citations, so that's why those numbers are so low. The next revenues are all based on our amortization schedules. And you can ask Abel any questions that you have on these, but that's our debt service fund twenty fourteen, our debt service fund twenty nineteen, our debt service fund twenty twenty. Debt service fund twenty twenty-three and debt service fund twenty twenty-four. Again, these are all based on our amortization schedules, they're locked in in terms of the revenues that get transferred into these funds. Abel, do you want to comment on any of that?
No, the tax rate is based on these numbers, we cannot, on the tax, the debt service tax rate. We cannot put anything other than what's, what you see in front of you. The exception being the paying agent fees, those cannot be included in the debt service tax rates. Cause they're not debt service per se.
So then that gets us to our capital projects fund, which is Department seven oh one, or I mean Fund seven oh one. And again, this is interest, this is managed interest income on checking and we're still looking, this will be to, to be decided. It'll be based on the actuals from Fund seven oh one plus Fund seven oh two minus seven oh two five fifty-two seventy. I think, was fifty-two seventy the paying agent fees? I think so. Anyway, these are just based on actuals and we'll fill those in next month. Next is the drainage fund, seven oh two. We typically just leave these just in case we have RSDPs, but we don't plan on any of them, we don't really budget for them other than to keep them on the radar. And then the drainage revenue, revenue is passed through for the drainage reviews that we do. And we've started handling more of those more efficiently with our engineers and in-house, so that's why that's at forty thousand. That gets us to the wastewater fund, Department sixty, which is Fund eight hundred. Again, the major item here is the wastewater. Is the wastewater revenue that we collect within this fund and we estimate that to be about nine hundred thousand. We budgeted nine hundred thousand last time, running a little bit shy of that or projected to be a little bit shy of that, six thousand short, but. It's, it's definitely in the ballpark, so we left it at nine hundred thousand. We do have some interest income there in the top item, forty-four hundred, which is about ten thousand. And then we have the industrial wastewater surcharge is a, is a contractual charge with our industrial customers. And that's fourteen, one forty-four, as is the PUD at ninety-eight thousand, one sixty.
Who do we have that qualifies as industrial?
I'm sorry, what was?
Who do we have that qualifies as industrial?
We have about eight customers that City of Austin says are subject to the industrial waste surcharges. And the City of Austin, they go in, review all the, their transactions, not transactions of use. And so they come up with these dollar amounts and it's a pass-through, they bill us, I enter and bill them.
So is that like service stations and?
Yes, restaurants, service stations, that kind of stuff.
Restaurants count too?
I'm sorry.
Restaurant counts as industrial?
Yes.
Can we have no grinder pump fees or?
No. No grinder pump fees. Okay, that's it, any questions on revenues? And we'll have a better sense, like I said, your, your major revenue source is the property tax that we will have in the. First week or so of August and we will get that updated so that you have more to work with at the next budget meeting. Okay, with that, we'll go on to. Exceptional items. So these are, all of these items, well, most of these items. You will have heard of before, a couple of new ones. As we always do. If you recall, on the expenditure sheets that you've seen, we just plug in the current labor costs, the current salary costs. That we're currently experiencing and then we allow council to have a look at what a cost of living adjustment of one percent. A cost of living adjustment of two percent and a cost of living adjustment of three percent would, would look like. Those are extrapolated over all the funds. And your cost for a one percent COLA would be twenty-two thousand seven seventy-five, your cost for a two percent COLA would be forty-two thousand two twenty-three. And your cost for a three percent COLA would be sixty-one thousand six seventy-one. As we've asked council to do in the past, you can, you could choose none of these, you could choose one of these. Or you could choose to combine one or two of these, if you wanted a, a four percent, you would take the three percent plus the one percent and that would be your new number. Very proud of this council, in previous councils, we have always, in my opinion, done a good. Done right by our staff and always tried to give them some sort of cost of living adjustment. This council was especially understanding in the past few years of the inflation that the nation was experiencing. And I think went above and beyond in some of these categories. So it's for your consideration, council, take a, take a look at it, give some thought to it for next month. As to what you would be willing or interested in doing to allow that cost of living adjustment. Again, cost of living adjustments are just that, they're to allow. Our staff to keep up with the cost of living as it increases. I will say, I think I heard data last week, the non-farm payroll increases have leveled off at about two and a half percent. Inflation has now leveled off at about two, two and three quarters, something like that, so. We have, I think, hopefully made it through the brunt of, of inflationary pressures, but. Definitely should be considered to continue our, our history of, of giving a cost of living adjustment to our staff.
So, non-contract staff, that's everybody but Allen?
It's everybody.
Everybody else.
Everybody but Allen, yeah. You'll get to have that question every year. Yeah, yes, everyone except for Alan, not that we don't love you, Alan. So that's that, gives it some thought, we will ask you to make a decision on that next month. The next is All Funds Dash Two, which is an interesting idea that was brought to me by the mayor of Wesley Lake Hills. This is, he, he would like to, and spoiler, spoiler alert, I'm about to withdraw this as an exceptional item. Because his funding didn't work out on his end, but I do want to socialize it with you because I do think it's an interesting idea. That he has brought to us and it will probably be something that I would ask you to consider next year if it, if it, if it kind of stays on the radar. The mayor of Wesley Lake Hills approached me, he had seen a presentation from a company that is able to tie all of the lights together, all of the traffic lights together. In a, in an overall, in one system. And Tech Dot has done this in at least one other city in the state. And I, and it probably between now and next year, we can see if they've seen success from that. But, but what it would essentially do is tie all of the lights together from three sixty to MOPAC, including those intersections. And all of the lights along the way and it's all controlled by. Artificial intelligence that, that manages the flow of traffic and the lights in real time based on actual traffic flows. And so what the mayor of Wesley Lake had come to me and said, hey, if we took care of all of our lights. Would y'all be interested in partnering up and taking care of y'all's lights? And he said, we'll take care, we'll do three sixty, you guys do MOPAC. And then we'll tie the whole corridor together in one system that manages all of the traffic flow together. I think it's a very interesting idea. I don't know if it would work. But I do think we ought to, you know, look at it over the course of the next year and see, it, 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 it may be something. That could really help us on with the backup that we have there at MOPAC and that intersection. And, and maybe could, I, I think we need to talk to Tech Dot about it because we are always sort of in a. Holding pattern and, and discussions with them about what to do with that intersection and so we can maybe. Get their professional. Input and experience on this idea and see if it might be something that would alleviate some of the traffic congestion at that light. And, and all along, and all along BK as well. So anyway, that said, I talked to him last week, he said, yeah, we ended up having some other priorities and we're not able to free up the cash to do this. He said, I think that we will have some. Additional revenue to be able to do it next year, so he said, if you would, just kind of put it on hold and let's continue to talk about it. So with that, I, I will be withdrawing this exceptional item, but I did want to leave it on for now to at least let you know about it. The next one is All Funds Dash Three and I will ask Izzy to come up and talk about this one as well as All Funds Dash Four. This is for a request from our public works department for a new half-ton truck as well as a new three-quarter or one-ton truck. And I'll let Izzy sing for his dinner now.
City Council, thank you, Mayor. Well, before you, we have requesting for a couple of, of new vehicles for public works. We are down one truck right now, we've been, it's been down for about six months, we just recently sold it, so we need to replace that truck. And that would be the, for the F three fifty, it's a pickup truck, we're talking about having it outfitted. With the lights and tool boxes so we can be able to carry the adequate tools that we need. And we're looking at for that truck to be outfitted completely. Along with the five years of maintenance, it's estimated to be about eighty-one thousand nine hundred, eighty-one thousand nine hundred and eighty-three.
Dollars for that truck.
For the next truck would be the half-ton and that would be to replace the twenty, twenty vehicle that we have. We need some, you know, in order to be able to stay with those five years of being able to swap out the vehicles. That's coming up at that, to be able to change that out. And that as well, we're looking at to be outfitted with lights and, you know, not. The vast of trucks, I'm sorry, the tool boxes like the other F three fifty would need, this one would just need. Minor boxes, toolboxes in that one, along with the five years of maintenance, projected maintenance on that, we're looking at fifty-seven thousand for that truck.
And Izzy, remind me, and this may be an Alan question too. Would these vehicles, can we roll like what we do for our, our PD where we put them in the, the leased own program? Where we have budget certainty going forward, are, are these, can we do the same thing with these vehicles?
Yes, I believe so, yes.
Yeah, we just went ahead and copied whatever PD's finance was previous.
But the thirty-four, six twenty-four and the forty-six, seven twenty-seven times two. That's, that's for the total cost, so would the total cost of the budget be that, those amounts? Or would it be something less if we did it on like a five-year lease?
It would be less, the, the information on the exceptional item summary sheet here is that it's an outright purchase next fiscal year.
Okay.
So it would be reduced.
You could also just finance it over five years to be similar.
True.
Yes.
I would say maybe before next month, let's, let's take a look at what those numbers would be as well. If we can get the, the one-year, if we can get the cost down but plan for it over five. Let's take a look at that. And then Izzy, if you had to pick a favorite child of these two vehicles, which, which one is, which one do you need most?
The F three fifty.
The F three fifty?
Yes, sir.
That's the, is that, that's, let's see, that's AF four. So AF four is the, is the one that most need. And you feel like it's end of life now?
I'm sorry?
You feel like it's end of life now?
No, it's, it's already, we've, it's, it's gone.
So that would definitely qualify. It's dead.
It's ended its life.
It's ended its life, okay. But the other one, still kicking a little bit?
Yes, sir, yes.
Okay. Any questions for Izzy on AF three or AF four? Okay, thanks Izzy.
Thank you.
Alright, the next would be exceptional item. One hundred dash twenty-five dash one, this is for a new drop box for payments, this is Veronica's, is she here?
She is not here, I said I'd advocate for a new box on her behalf.
Alright, please do so, this is, this is for upfront, is that right?
Yes, sir, it's for the, where the payments are made upfront, the box is just a little bit worn, a little bit weather damaged and she would like a new one that looks a bit more professional.
I think that council should be able to find it in your heart to come up with this fifteen hundred for Veronica.
You could paint it.
You could, you could, you could decorate it, you could do all kinds of great stuff with it, so. Okay, so that is one hundred twenty-five dash one, be thinking about that. That gets us to one hundred dash thirty dash one, which is additional street paving, this is the discussion I had with you earlier. I will put in a suggested number for your consideration for approval next month. We can have a, a more of, it, it, it's premature to have the discussion about it just yet until we know what the final revenue numbers are and see how that's going to shake out. We'll need to find, we'll, we'll determine what our actual unexpended balance is in streets, we'll back out the three eighty-two that will still be reflected in that. So that you have a good sense of what you have to work with. But this is just putting you on notice that I, I will be suggesting that we add additional dollars to that so that we can do that RFP that we're talking about. And what I'll, we will look closer at the timing that I talked about earlier. And then once we sort of take a straw poll on this, then we can. Probably go ahead and, and start the wheels turning on an RFP to try to get some of that done before AO finishes. The next one is the one hundred dash forty dash one, which is the financing and outfitting of three new police vehicles. We'll have Chief come up and tell us about that one, I think we talked about it a little bit last month, but if you would, talk to us, Chief, on this.
We did, so what this includes is for us to add three additional patrol vehicles to our fleet. What you'll see is you'll see the quotes actually for the vehicles, for the outfitting, also there is an Axon quote in there and what that would be. The reason why the Axon quote is in there is because that's who the dash cam would be through. And so that's where, where that quote comes into. The only other quote that, and you will see a Motorola quote as well, which that's for the radios. And so the only other quote that we're waiting for is, is graphics and then that way we can see the overall picture of how much these vehicles will cost. But what this will do is it'll add three additional vehicles to our fleet for, because there are some periods where either we have four officers here and we don't have enough vehicles. Or also we have officers in training and so what we have done is, we, since we cannot afford for our vehicles to be offline, they do drive their personal cars. And so with the reimbursement for the mileage when they go to training, it comes out of our training budget, so we get hit on that side of the budget for not providing the vehicles.
But Chief, the fifty thousand that's here reflected, obviously it's a five-year.
Yeah, it's kind of a guesstimate on what the finance would be, so it's, it would be a finance, we would finance these vehicles. So it's, it would be a finance, uh, we would finance these vehicles, uh, through, um, government capital. And so that would be over a course of five years.
But you think that covers both the vehicle and, and the outfitting?
Yes, sir, so currently ours is, I believe thirty-four and some change. But of course with inflation, I put fifty to hopefully just kind of see where we're at, um, with, when all these quotes come in.
Okay, any questions for Chief? And I, um, this is not for Chief, but I think that type of number is, is what I'd like to see next month for the new, the one ton, the half ton truck and the three quarter ton truck. So we can see, we can always extrapolate it out, but let's see what the cost would be on this actual budget if we did, if we went through capital. What is it, capital finance there?
Government capital.
Government, government capital.
Yeah, we'll have it for you next month.
Okay. Okay, that gets us, uh, through that, thank you Chief. Um, that gets us to exceptional item one hundred dash sixty-five dash one. This is the creek, uh, creek cleaning and clearing Izzy, if you would come back up. Um, this is one that we've talked about, um, internally. A kind of, and we have, council has talked about it as well. But if you would, um, this is on top of what we already have in the budget. We have some significant dollars in the budget already for, um, street right of ways, for street, uh, for, for tree trimming around right of ways. We have, we do have some in the budget already for some basic tree trimming around, not in the right of ways as well. Like twenty thousand?
Correct.
Um, but this would be on top of that to do, go a little deeper, a little bit further. And this would be in furtherance of, um, some of our initiatives that we've done to try to knock down, um, or, or mitigate our fire, fire hazard, right?
Correct, anything, you know, go through the creeks, through the culverts, clean up any that could be deemed, uh, fu- fuel for, you know, a
Wildfire.
Wildfire or, or just, um, causing any floods for that matter, if we ever get any more, you know, rain. We have reached out here to, uh, Tex dot and have them help us out upstream. But as far as working downstream, we need to clear up whatever we can in our creeks and, uh, help mitigate that in the future.
So that's what, that's what that is council. Um, I think it's a worthy project. It's not vitally necessary, but I do think it's a good use of the funds if, if we have them. So, any questions for Izzy on that one?
Thank you.
And then the last one is one we talked about, uh, last month, one hundred dash sixty-five dash two. This is to just put some dollars in the budget to be able to retain. Uh, architectural or design firm for the new city hall do anticipate us making some moves on that over the next year. These, these dollars, uh, would just go into the budget and be available for us to expend for some of those initial, um, startup costs. Um, the dollars can be recaptured out of the bond funds as we, you know, once we issue those, those dollar, those, those funds. Um, issue that debt, we can get these dollars back, but we do need to put something in the budget. So we have someplace to pull it from if we end up, if, if council ends up hiring someone, which I would anticipate that we would, um, to get rolling on the, um, the design of the city hall.
And I assume if we started that process, we would then start the bond process too?
Yeah, I think probably around that same time, yeah.
My only comment on that is I'd suggest, um, making the description a little bit broader. Um, for not just architectural and design firm, but maybe project management and also, um, maybe site planning. Um, and of course those, site planning could be subbed through the architectural firm anyway, but, uh, you know, I, I did want to, um, also, um, suggest that we might want to include, might want to describe as architectural and design firm for new city hall. I would suggest amending it to arch- architectural and design firm and project management for new city hall and any other capital improvement projects. Because there's a number of projects that have been suggested by RCDC and the Parks Commission. For example, um, repurposing the, um, field house into more of a community center instead of a concession stand, which I think there's probably broad support for the idea. But, you know, I think one of the things we learned in doing the, um, retaining wall project that took three years, um, was that, um, we've got lots of committees that have lots of good ideas in the city and that have input and it's a great way to get public input. But it's not a great way to manage projects. And, you know, I, I, as a, as a real estate developer, I've got a number of projects going. Um, you know, an eighty, eighty unit expansion to some apartments and a forty room hotel and some things like that. But on all my projects, I always hire a project manager. And the ones that I, the guy that I use is, works about halftime for me and builds hourly and he does project management for other people too. And I'm not bringing him up to suggest that we hire him. I'm bringing him up as an example of how a project manager might, um, be useful. Um, and especially, you know, once you get to, um, something as big as the city hall project. Somebody who's a, a project manager can help you. I know we have some really good architects and really good people on committees. But part of the problem is that, you know, a committee by definition is not somebody that's in charge of something or responsible for something. And in some ways, it, when we approach projects by committee, it creates a little bit of what I'll call a power vacuum. And you have a lot of different groups who want to try to control it, including, um, um, you know, people from different committees and even council members. But I think having a, you know, and, 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 you know, we had some really good citizen input on that retaining wall, for example. But then I thought that, um, you know, one person was going to essentially be project management. But then they were out of town when it was going on and Izzy's out there dealing with it. And it's like, yeah, it'd be nice if we handled our projects, I think, a little more professionally. And, and, and I think that if we have capital improvement projects like the one I mentioned or, um, you know, even a, um, rehabilitation of the ball field and sprinkler system or, or a parking lot or even, you know, uh, rehab. Um, we're talking about fun, projects that, you know, might be funded from, uh, RCDC or in the case of city hall, might be refunded by, um, um, by bond money. But I think it'd be nice to have the flexibility to spend some and then, you know, get reimbursed when we needed to. So that's my suggestion.
No, that, that's a good suggestion. And actually, as you were talking, um, I wanted to be clear on what my thought process was on this exceptional item. Um, but actually, as I think about it, it would probably actually go into an existing line item that we have in development services called professional consultation. That's our line item fifty-two seventy-two. Um, don't you think we could, we could put it in there in terms of a line item? So it actually probably would go into that, uh, professional consultation line item, which would broaden it to the extent that you're talking about. But in terms of what, what my thought process was, um, the, the name of the exceptional item is, is kind of where my head is, but sure. Okay, um.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
My, my only comment is that for the, the, um, services provided in connection with a bond funded project, I think we're going to have to have a separate line item for that bond fund.
Yes.
And, and, uh, then, but I, I like the notion that we have.
Uh, that's a great point, actually.
I think you have to account for it.
It may actually need to go into, what is that, seven oh one?
If we want to refund the bond part from the bond.
And that's what, and we set that, I think it's on seven oh one, is that right Abel? I, I agree with you. Yeah, seven oh one is, is kind of.
And then do the other, the thing, the, the part, account for it in the other line.
Yeah. And what we'd probably do is, is maybe put it into fifty-two seventy-two and then move it over into seven oh one. I don't know, what, yes, I agree with all of your points. And we'll figure out how to do it, um, if in fact you want to do the, the dollars, Sarah.
What did we call the bond when we went out for the bonds, what did we say that?
I'll have to look, I have all of that. Public safety.
On the ballot?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, whatever you call it for.
What do we call it?
Are you, I'm sorry, I didn't quite hear.
Well, I'm just, I'm wondering if, if we should be calling this for a new city hall.
It, it's.
Because we don't have enough money.
Yeah, no, that's, that's fair, it, it was.
The bond is, is not enough for a new city hall. It's enough to rehab this city hall, but I just didn't know, we needed to be a little more accurate.
No, you're right. Literally my text to Alan was, oh no, I forgot. So I didn't spend a lot of time wordsmithing the correct terminology for the, um, for the exceptional item. But yeah, I, I, I agree. It is not necessarily a new city hall.
So, so at the moment there with council's permission, I've changed it to retention of an architectural and design firm and construction project management services for municipal building improvements and other municipal capital improvement projects. Does that seem to capture what it?
I think that's fine.
Wait, did you say new city hall?
I said municipal building improvements.
Okay, perfect.
Which could be raising and rebuilding or something else.
Yeah, okay. Okay, um, so that brings us to the end of our proposed exceptional items. Um, I would, uh, I will, and that, that's a total cost of around three eighty-nine in exceptional items. Um, around two and a quarter of that would come out of the general fund, around eighty-two. Um, and eighty-one would come out of water and wastewater. That, that may go down significantly if we look at a, um, a financing option for those. And then out of streets will be to, to be determined. Um, but again, kind of a refresher on how this, uh, sheet is set up. Um, as you make decisions on exceptional items, not everything comes out of the same funds, right? So some, some items will come out of the general fund. Um, very specific items may come out of water or wastewater and even more specific items can come out of streets. And we do try to show you, um, when you're making decisions on these, uh, exceptional items, where those dollars will be pulled from. And then you'll have a worksheet next month that'll show you kind of what you're running, you're running account balances are in those funds as you make decisions on those exceptional items. The only, um, caveat that I would say, and it will be based on discussion that, that I hear from you later on this evening around the cameras that have been a discussion, uh, in the community. And I think there's an agenda item that Ms. Brown put on the agenda for tonight regarding the, um, cameras. So if, if council wants to do something in that space, I would encourage whoever wants to take lead on that to get with staff between now and the next work group meeting and also add an exceptional item on that item. Based on your discussions tonight. Anything else?
Just, just your comment down at the bottom, that the total that you mentioned includes the AI traffic lines that we're taking off.
It does, and, and will.
And it does not include additional street paving or the cowl.
That is correct.
Whatever we pick for that.
That's correct.
So, um, you're saying we should account for the cameras as, as an exceptional item?
If y'all want to do something on cameras, there's nothing in the budget to do that with current.
I, I did not post that item on the agenda.
Oh, I thought you did, uh, maybe you did, I don't know, somebody did. It's on there tonight, right? Okay.
Yeah, I, I.
I'm sorry.
I might have, I'm, I know I wanted it on there, but.
I believe it was Kaiser Emeka, she is.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
My misstatement.
But I was happy for council member Brown to have it, have it on there too.
I did not have, yeah.
Yeah, my bad. Uh, so anyway, yeah, if, if, if someone wants to do, there's nothing in the budget currently, um, for that expenditure. So if, if council, if it's council's desire to, to do something around that, um, initiative, then I would encourage you to put some money in the budget to do it. Okay, um, that is it. Any questions on expenditures, revenues or exceptional items? All right, again, we'll ask you to make some decisions on those, um, next month, so be prepared to do that. And with that, we will take a five minute recess. And with that, we will take a five-minute recess. City Council for the city of Rollingwood will come back to order at seven ten PM. And we will, um, start with public comment. Anyone wishing to make, uh, public comment on items not on the agenda?
We have one public comment.
All right.
Oh, never mind.
No? Okay, okay. All right, well, with that, we will move off of agenda item, uh, the public comment, agenda item, and move on to presentations. Uh, moving on to agenda item number three under presentations, presentation and discussion on the quarterly investment report for the third quarter. Abel, come on up.
Thank you, Mayor. Currently, as you know, all the city's investments are with tax full. Uh, currently, the city has, uh, seven hundred and eighty-four thousand twenty dollars and seventy, seventy-seven cents. And the general fund, water fund, wastewater fund are the ones that have, uh, invested their funds with tax full. Uh, the general fund and wastewater fund are about equal, and the, uh, water fund has about one-fifth of what, uh, those other two funds have. Uh, for the quarter, the third quarter of the fiscal year, uh, the city had about eighty-three hundred dollars in, in interest. Year-to-date, uh, we have about twenty-five thousand seven hundred and, uh, interest collected. And the third quarter, as far as yields are concerned, they've stabilized about four point three percent, and so that hasn't changed. Uh, so it's been, it's been fairly stable for, for the third quarter. It hasn't really gone up or down too much. Uh, any questions?
Any questions on the quarterly investment report for the third quarter? All right, thank you. Hearing none, we will move off of agenda item number three and on to agenda item number four, presentation and discussion on the budget review for the third quarter.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, looking at where we are, we're about, uh, seventy-five percent of the year in. On property taxes, so far, we've collected about ninety-eight percent of what we budgeted for. And like I mentioned earlier, we're about thirty-two thousand dollars, uh, under the budgeted amount in terms of what we've collected. On the city sales taxes, uh, we're at ninety-seven percent of those seven hundred thousand that we budgeted, uh. So, uh, compared to the previous year, we so far have collected a hundred and five percent of what we did last year. Water sales, uh, we've collected ninety-nine percent of what we budgeted. And, uh, last year, a year ago at the same time, we only collected nine hundred thousand, so, uh, we've collected a hundred twenty-four, a hundred twenty-one percent of what we did last year, a year ago. And, uh, wastewater, uh, we budgeted nine hundred thousand in revenue. Year-to-date collections are about six hundred and seventy-eight thousand, so that's only seventy-five percent. Uh, and so we've collected about ninety-six percent of what we did a year ago. So, water, wa- wastewater compared to water is lagging behind if you compare the two, the two funds. Uh, the general fund as a whole, uh, revenue, we've collected seventy-eight percent of what we budgeted for. But remember that, uh, we've collected all our property taxes for the most part, so the majority of revenue that's not being collected is, uh, going to be sales taxes. Uh, the, what the, what we have collected as of now compared to a year ago, we've collected, uh, a hundred and seven percent of, of what we collected a year ago. On the expenditure side, uh, we've only spent about fifty-five percent of the budget, and, uh, that's about ninety-seven percent of what we did a year ago. So, expenditures right now are, uh, uh, not, uh, not as high as, uh, compared to revenues. Uh, the water fund, uh, again, on revenues, uh, uh, these are total revenues. Uh, we've collected ninety-nine percent of what we budgeted, and that's only eighty-nine percent of what we did a year ago. So, revenue compared to a year ago is a little bit, uh, a little bit behind. Uh, as far as wastewater is concerned, uh, we've collected, uh, seventy-five percent of what we budgeted, and, uh, that's only sixty-eight percent of what we did a year ago. On the expenditure side, uh, we've collected sixty-five percent of what we budgeted for expenditures. And what we've expended so far is eighty-four percent of what we spent a year ago. So, both revenue and expenditures are a little bit, uh, behind compared to what we did a year ago at this point in time. And, uh, any questions?
Any questions for Abel? And I'd just say, I, I, I think Q three is always the easiest time for us to, to see, um, I don't, I don't know, sort of, I, I guess I would say the fruits of our labor. And, and we take a very conservative approach to our revenues, um, and a very, um, fiscally conservative approach to our expenditures. And I think Q three is when it's the easiest time to see that.
Yes, sir. And, uh, I, I, overall, my personal opinion is that it's in a very healthy condition financially speaking.
Great. Thank you. Any questions? All right, with that, we will move off of agenda item number four and-
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Move on to agenda item number five, presentation update on the police department's non-emergency contact information. Now, there have been some questions about this. You and I and Alan and the team have talked about it a great deal, but I'll let you put it on the record and explain, uh, the background.
No worries. So, the police department did, uh, move away from being able to reach an on-duty officer on our cellphone, uh, a couple of months ago. And I understand that there are some frustrations maybe in the community, um, with that. But there are specific reasons on why we did choose to go that direction. And that was because while I know it does provide comfort that somebody can either text a cellphone, you know, to, to reach the on-duty officer, which was happening, and also, or just call them, that call or text message has the, a high capability of going unanswered. And so I don't think we were being able to, one, provide the service that we need to provide to the community by having some, somebody wait for us to respond. And also, it does create an officer's safety issue as he is not equipped to dispatch himself to that call. And so, um, that's why, um, we were getting some higher priorities, um, coming to that cellphone. And then it also created a safety net that the community did not like if that call was not answered at that immediate time. Whether the officer was on a traffic or on another call, they became upset, and we don't want them to, to end up in that situation. So, what's happening is so, we, like I said, you can no longer reach the on-duty officer through the actual cellphone. You contact Travis County Dispatches, and we pay a yearly fee to Travis County Dispatch. This is not something outside of the norm.
Large fee.
Correct. And so this is not outside of the norm, and I want the community to be aware that even though it is Travis County Dispatch, they dispatch for the city of Rollingwood, and a Rollingwood police officer will still respond to your call. You're not getting a Travis County Sheriff's Deputy. The only way that you would receive another department coming to your scene is one, based up on the priority of call. If the Rollingwood officer is tied up, it, another area officer will be dispatched to you depending on the priority of the call. So, it actually, like I said, allows us to provide a better service to the community. Because if that Rollingwood officer is on a call and you have an emergency, it goes to Travis County Dispatch. They dispatch onto our computer, which notifies everybody who's on that computer, which is Wesley Hills, Travis County Sheriff's Office. And so, they can also respond to the call in, like, an immediate nature, and so-
And we actually went to this, I mean, we had a discussion about it, because we had a call that came in, um, the officer was indisposed, I'll just say indisposed.
Correct.
It was a higher level call, but it was a non-emergency number, and so it, it actually didn't go that long before it was responded to, but it wasn't immediate.
Right.
Um, and so-
It was not immediate, and so the officer did call the number back, but in that time span, it had already hit social media. And so it was just, and so it also is frustrating for the officer who gets put in a situation, do they take a risk of officer's safety issues to answer this phone call while they're on a traffic stop? And turn their attention due to possible backlash of not answering that cellphone. And I don't want o- our officers to be put in that situation. Um, officer's safety is paramount, and so is the community. So, um, like I said, going to that non-emergency number is beneficial for everybody involved. And so what we have done too is you call the police department, um, you can hit the number that will automatically send you to Travis County Dispatch. We had originally had it where, we gave you the number, um, and now we're trying to get it to where it kind of links you actually. But right now, you're going to Travis County's phone tree. Um, Alan kind of figured out a way. We're gonna try to see if we can kind of work through to hit that option three. But again, this is a service we're paying for, and so we need to utilize it.
This is something you and I haven't talked about.
Okay.
Um, is, is that initial message that the resident hears, is that a message that we're leaving? Like, when they call that number and they're listening to the w- the buttons?
No, so, if they're calling the police department, we're doing, kind of like you would the, the on-duty cellphone, we're telling you to, to dial, hit option two for a non- if you need an officer to respond for a non-emergency issue.
So, pause there. When you're saying hit, hit two for, are, are we the ones recording that message that says hit two for X?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that's where I'm going. It may help alleviate some, because I do think you, you said something that, that, that sort of struck home with me in that they think that they're getting Travis County, so it, if I don't know, but if I'm not listening to this meeting-
Correct.
I'm thinking, well, I just got punted to Travis County. I don't, I don't wanna talk Travis County. I wanna talk to my Rollingwood P-. And so, let's, let's think about verbiage-
Okay.
In our message that says, uh, to reach the Rollingwood Police Department is dispatched by Travis County Dispatch.
Okay.
Or something like that that references us-
Right.
So that I don't feel like I'm getting punted to Travis County.
Understood.
And getting away-
And I didn't even think of it that way, and so, like I said, 'cause I, I think that was, seemed to be the concern, is that people were thinking that we weren't gonna be the ones responding to them.
Yeah, that's the concern.
And so, no matter what, we are dispatched, um, and so we will always be the ones to respond in the city of Rollingwood.
I think the mayor's got a really good point, you know, that that would solve a lot of the problems, to say, Rollingwood Police are dispatched through Travis County Dispatch, uh, to connect.
I think that, I think that is a good idea.
Let's do that.
Okay.
And I bet you that solves a lot of problems.
I think so too, and so, um, but I also want to reiterate that we are still available. We have an administrative line. If you have an admin- administrative question, you can still reach us here at the office if you need, like I said, if you have an administrative question.
Yeah, it's really just about getting it into our systems so that it's tracked, it's, it's all the things, it's dispatched, it's tracked, it's recorded.
And that's the other thing is, is that when they were coming on the cellphone, we didn't have any data that we could go back and look at, oh, how many times were we called it at, let's just say, this residence? Or how many call, times were we contacted for burglaries?
When did the call come, yeah, when did the call come in, came in, actually?
And-
It was about looking at the cellphone. I mean, that's not the way to do it.
Well, and the cellphone is not recorded, so you lose that evidence. The evidentiary value is gone.
That is, correct. And like I said, and the officer's also, like, not equipped to dispatch his own call, 'cause he's, can't drive there and ask you all the pertinent questions on, that he needs, um, answered. And it also allows some trackability on our officers, is when did we get the call, how long did it take us to respond? And it, like I said, it, it, it's, it's a whole lot of data collecting, so that's why we went that direction. But I love the comment, and we'll definitely change that verbiage, I think, like I said, 'cause it feels like that's what the number one response was, is that they were just nervous that we weren't gonna be the ones to respond to them, so.
That's great. Any questions?
So, the administrative number, is that the three-two-eight nineteen-hundred?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. That is not the one that gets you to, to Travis County Dispatch?
No, so, so that's, and it specifically says, if you need an officer, dispatch to your location for a non-emergency call. So that, so you can reach us for administrative, whether it's, um, I don't know, you have a question about when streets are gonna be closed for an event or something? I mean, you can still reach us on the administrative line, but if you need an officer dispatched for a call that is not active, you call the Travis County number. So, to me, anytime you would kind of call that on-duty officer, you contact the non-emergency number. If you feel you need to call nine-one-one, please call nine-one-one, so.
Sure, are you done? Any questions for Chief? All right, thank you, Chief. I'll recognize you.
Shanti Jaykuma, third three oh nine Park Hill Drive. So, just judging from comments in the community, whether it's online or wherever, I think we have a way of reaching every single resident in the community, whoever has a water meter, okay? Send out something in writing, because not everybody watches this meeting or hears about the details of how this thing will actually work. So, if y'all could send it out from, from the city or from PD or whatever, let everybody know, not just once, do it a couple of times. So that if they've, if it goes with the water bill, they may throw out the insert, or they don't get the water bill, they pay online, they may not know. So, however you, you can do it, let every resident know from y'all, not amongst themselves, that this is the fut- this is how we, y'all are going to handle it.
Yeah.
I think that will clear up a lot of-
Yeah, we could, yeah, we'll try to do something like that. It was, uh, again, like many things around here, it took on a life of its own. It was a, it was a measure of efficiency and actually is a better way to, to do it, and a more efficient and quicker service. Um, I think, I think it got lost in translation, and we'll try to do better on that, but. Okay, yeah, any other questions? All right, with that, we will move on to the consent agenda. Happy to have a motion.
Move approval of the consent agenda.
Have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion by Ms. Brown, a second by Ms. Hudson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say no. Being four ayes, no nays, motion carries. Thank you, council. Uh, moving on to the regular agenda, agenda item number eleven, update and discussion regarding, uh, water CIP packages one through four in the Nixon Pleasant and Hubbard-Hatley-Pickwick drainage projects. And I'm happy to either let Alan open it up or go ahead and recognize Kay Fries. How do you want to do it?
I think we'll go ahead and recognize Kay Fries. Uh, Greg obviously is our city engineer here, and he has all the information we need.
Cool. Good evening, Mayor and council. Um, yeah, so I'll just give you an update. I talked to the, the, the project manager for AO Services this morning, so I've got an update on where they stood, um, this morning. Starting with the water CIP project, um, they've completed all of the sites except for the Vance Vale and the B Cave, um, PRV. Um, they are progressing on Vance Vale. Uh, they've instar- they've installed about eight hundred and fifty linear feet of that water line. It's about thirty-five percent completed. They've actually hit some really hard limestone that's slowed them down, um, which is one reason that's taken a lot longer than they, they expected. Um, they are working south, so we're hoping that as they get further away from, um, uh, from that low point, that they start getting into some, um, softer material and they can speed up. So, they're averaging about forty linear feet per day. Uh, the B Cave PRV is scheduled to be completed in September. Um, AO has worked with Izzy and the Public Works team to identify valve shutouts, um, to make sure that we, um, can shut that line down and make the tie, necessary tie-ins without putting any of the businesses out of, out of water. Um, we actually decided to go in and make that connection overnight, um, so AO has gone and talked to the prop- uh, the business owners there to make sure no one's twenty-four, um, hours operation. So, um, they'll make that connection in one night and get everyone back in water. Uh, so that, that, the water CIP is scheduled to be completed September twenty-fourth, per their latest schedule. Uh, on Nixon Pleasant, uh, all the storm has been completed. That's been done for some time now. Um, they started on the landscaping this week, and they expect to com- be completed by the end of the month, um, if not sooner. They're optimistic on that, assuming the weather cooperates. Um, and then following that, they are gonna be placing, um, finalizing the channel boulders, that armoring of that channel, um, and getting that grouted in. Um, they're scheduled on that the, the first week of August.
I've said this to all of our team, I wanna say it to you, 'cause you and I have it, but make sure when they grout that in, that they're doing it in a very natural way, where they're tucking it back and so that it- so that it looks very natural and still in place, but you know what I mean?
Yeah, sure thing.
What about the, um, rate on the culvert?
Yeah, so we work with AO, and we came up with a detail for that. Um, they've sent it to their fabricator. It's gonna take, so we, we decided on, um, galvanized, uh, steel so that it doesn't rust out, and that's gonna take about four to five weeks for them to fabricate and get delivered. Um, so that has been ordered, um, and in the meantime, I asked them to put up some wire mesh, so they just- Um, and in the meantime, I asked them to put up some wire mesh, so they just had some on hand, so they put that up. They're supposed to put that up today. I didn't have a chance to run by there, but um, just as an interim protection on that, they're gonna put up some wire meshes to prevent anyone from getting in there, but then until they have the, the permanent solution. And once that, that, um, those bars get there, it should just take a couple of hours for them to bolt it on, and, and they'll be done.
Thank you.
And staff and the contractor has continued to meet periodically with the homeowner, the stakeholder homeowners around there, and I think those meetings have gone well. Uh, had one just last week. I think it was, uh, trying to keep everybody up to speed. Uh, Jerry's picked his boulders, right?
Yes, sir.
Boulders have been picked. Um, so we've got those. I'll, I'll went by today and thought those were placed. Two, just a reminder, as we get to the final phase of that and the, um, uh, and not to be understated, and I wanna say this to you two. I've talked to Izzy about it, I've talked to AO about it, I've talked to, um, Mike Marin at length about it. But when we get ready to do the, the repaving on that, don't, don't forget, that's a very important part of, uh, that project, and that we need to take that hump out of, we need to take that crown out of that, um, section of, of road, and we need to make sure that we go all the way up where it's drawn. Um, so that all of that flows correctly. That, that final flow, that final street flow is a very important component of that project, so we need to make sure that we get it right. And I'm happy to go back out there with you guys too. I know AB spent a lot of time looking at that. We have to, uh, there's a low point over, close to Kevin Schell's, um, yard that needs to get corrected, uh, when we do that, and then that crown that empties into Mike Marin's driveway also needs to be, uh, corrected. And I think the correction is as simple as taking that crown out of that, or at least lessening the crown in that roadway, so.
Sure thing.
I'm on the record, everyone.
I was gonna say, I went over there when it was raining last, last week and looked at where the water was going, and it's like it wasn't going
I know, I'm, I'm aware.
Because it's not, it's not, it was going down Mike's driveway, so.
Yeah, and they, 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 they ultimately, so they, they originally planned this, they did some repaving almost a year ago, I would say. They were gonna just do one final at the end. They decided to break it into two separate ones now, so they're gonna repave, um, Nixon Pleasant and some of the other water sites, the, end of this month, so that should hopefully be done, um, in the next couple of weeks.
Yeah, and, and I don't know if you're here, uh, we've, the community has been very pleased with AO subcontractor on the repaving. They, they've done a really nice job.
That's good to hear.
And pass that on, and, and I don't think you were here in the budget section. We're having a discussion, council's having a discussion about, um, some additional dollars for repaving that is not included in the CIP. Um, and we need to circle up with you guys pretty quickly between now and next month. The timing's not ideal based on when they adopt the budget, and when we would need to try to do an RFP in order to catch the last train out with AO and their sub, 'cause it is a, it probably would be several hundred thousand, um, that we would like to do some additional paving on, and, um, if, if possible, I mean, hopefully AO would be interested and/or their sub to just bid it themselves. I don't know. Let's talk about what that would look like, but, um, we do have some additional dollars to do some additional paving, and if we could catch it while they are already mobilized, that might be a smart way to do it.
Okay, yeah, sure thing. Uh, the last one's Hubbard-Hatley. Uh, they have continued to install the storm on that one. Um, that one has, has been slowed down to some utility conflicts that they encountered that we've been working with them on. Um, one of them required a change order to add a new junction box to drop the storm below some utilities, so they're still waiting on that. Um, I am do- uh, owed an answer by the end of this week on a schedule for when that will be installed, but they're continuing to, to, to make progress on that project. Um, and that one is expected to be completed, uh, with their current schedule on August twenty-seventh. And as I mentioned, they're gonna be repaving end of this month, um, and then the final repaving and the final closeout will be, uh, toward the end of September.
Uh, not to be dead horse, but while I have you, um, back on Pleasant-Nixon too, I know that, I think you've been involved in the discussions about the, the additional uh, larger boulders along the one side of the channel.
Yep.
To make sure that, um, it's done the way it's drawn. And then the other thing, if you would, it takes some time. I know AB, um, I know that he and I, I'm, I'm almost certain that he put in the construction notes to make sure that we level out and take out any of the standing water, the opportunity for standing water under that culvert, where it empties out there over, uh, under Hatley. Um, and I keep meaning to go look at those construction notes. AB may remember offhand, but, um, if you would help us remember to look at that, 'cause I owe that to, um, to Duncan, and I wanna make sure that I'm good on my word on that. So I'm pretty sure it's in the construction notes. Let's check and see. If not, we'll do it with Public Works, but I, I, I think it's in the construction notes.
Okay. Yeah, I guess as overall, this, you know, ended with, you know, we've been very pleased with AO. I think they've been working with the city and the property owners very well, and they're working really hard. So I know this project has gone on longer than we would have liked, but they are working hard and, um, making sure that they're making progress, so we've been, we've been pleased with them.
Yeah, I think they've done a good job. Hopefully they like us still.
Even now.
I'm sure they do.
Yeah.
He's, Ryan still answers the phone when we call, so it can't be too bad. Any, any questions?
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Thanks, don't go far.
I'm passing it over to Phil.
Okay, uh, moving off of Agenda Item Number Eleven, moving on to Agenda Item Number Twelve, consideration and possible action on approval of a water conservation plan and a drought contingency plan. Uh, recognize Alan, uh, recognize Kay Fries, or however you want to open it.
I think that's it. Yes, sir, we have, um, as you recall, last, uh, last council meeting, we had discussed the water conservation plan, the drought contingency plan. Council had some concerns with some of the content, some of the, the plan being a bit burdensome, perhaps more than what, uh, what Rollingwood needed. And so asked that Kay Fries go out and kind of make it a bit simpler here. So we have Phil Williams here from Kay Fries. He's the, uh, engineer working on this for us.
Good evening. Um, we coordinated with LCRA staff to see which, uh, sections of the plans were necessary to keep, not alter. We also had them review the plans, uh, preliminarily, and, uh, they provided some comments that we addressed. We also, uh, went through and cut out the sections that were not applicable to Rollingwood, and, uh, checked for consistency with the current plans, and we also, uh, reviewed through LCRA's rules that they have for those plans.
Okay, great. Counsel, do we have any questions for Kay Fries?
Well, I will say, sir, I know something that I've heard while, I guess, council thinks it more questions. There was a concern raised about whether five hundred acre feet per year would be sufficient to meet the city's needs. Um, if you could speak to that a bit. I know there's somewhere in the notes or somewhere in the plan where I think it was discussed, and there's some math around it. If you could speak to whether you believe that would be sufficient for the foreseeable future.
Yeah, and I might need you to step in on that one.
Yeah, when we, when we first, um, started working on this, we looked at the five-year historical water usage, and the city was averaging about four hundred and thirty-nine acre feet per year. Um, and so we felt comfortable with going up to five hundred. Five hundred is kind of the, there's a breakpoint in the application, um, that requires, you know, some additional cost um, for the water. It's kind of a, it's a bit of a tricky situation where you, if you don't use all the water, you pay for the water that you don't use, and if you exceed the water, you pay even more for it. So it is a balance. Um, I think I wrote, um, today, we have like that, we have about a thirteen percent buffer based on what we've seen in the past five years. I know the water use that's in this has some very high months that were from some main breaks that skewed the data. Um, so I would consider those abnormal and, and hopefully with some of these CIP projects, that, that doesn't occur.
And even in a situation like that, it's not like we don't have the water, we just.
Correct, you would pay, you would pay a sur- a surplus if you use more than that, um, so it's balancing. You have to pay for water you don't use, and you have to pay some more for water you exceed, so, um, it's not like you'd get shut off. It's just some more expensive water if you were to, to go above that for one year.
Okay, cool. Alright, council, any, any other questions for Kay Fries?
I, it's, I noticed several things still in here, and I didn't begin, didn't, I had computer issues, so I did not get through all of, reading through all of this. Um, but just some inconsistencies with between the, the plans and the application, um, between how many connections we have, or, um, watering days, schedules, and just things like that that are not, not the same in all the documents. I, you know, if we're, if we're submitting these, and these are things that they're gonna expect us to comply with, it seems like they should be consistent.
Are there inconsistencies?
Um, not to my understanding. So with the water conservation plan, that would have the regular watering schedules for Rollingwood and the drought contingency plans. It does include, um, a watering schedule that would be enforced from LCRA during certain stages.
Okay.
They don't, they don't match what we do, so we, we would have to have to, have to change.
But what is here is reflective of what's needed, not necessarily what we do, but what is needed?
Uh, I, I do believe we have, and, and we can, of course, check again, um, what, what is done, but then, as I said, with certain drought stages, there is what's needed, so.
Has, did, has Veronica reviewed this, Stephen?
No. Yeah, we did check. The ordinances are online, and felt like the normal watering schedule matched. It's, I think it might be that once you go into drought stages, LCRA has.
Additional. That, that's what I was wondering, like.
So you can either, you can either have, like, some cities have more strict than LCRA, but you add a minimum, you need to meet the LCRA requirements under those drought stages.
So it doesn't necessarily have to be identical, it just has to meet or exceed what they're asking for, which is what this is reflective of.
Correct. Yeah, you, yeah, correct. So you can, you can be more strict than LCRA, you just need to, that's the bare minimum, once you have.
And what's reflected here is that bare minimum.
Correct, in those different stages.
Okay.
Correct.
So I think, I mean, and, and we can go with, through with a fine-tooth comb, um, and try to either align or make sure that we're at least meeting what's here, uh, as long as they don't have to be identical, I'm, I'm good with that. Um, and we'll spend some time with it to make sure that we.
Happy to help go through.
I, I would like you to do that.
Well, I mean, 'cause there's references to water loss in the water treatment process, which we don't do, and billing system that can, um, break out multifamily residential and agricultural and wholesale rates, which we don't have. It's, you know, so there's, there's still some stuff in here that, um, that we don't do, so we don't wanna commit to, to doing it, because we, we don't need to do it, so.
Yeah, um, in your discussions with LCRA, you know, when we started this process, they were kind of getting close to having all of their water rights spoken for. Have they given any indication where they are on that?
I haven't heard anything. Have you?
They haven't said anything like.
When they give us feedback, they didn't say.
Hurry up.
Yeah, and I, and I will say, you know, we did, there's some of those sections that were likely those sections where they told us we can't change it. So there were sections of this that they said, "You can ch- uh, change X, Y, and Z, but you can't change these other ones." So we had, so there's probably some in there that
Okay.
might not apply, but we cannot change it per their requirements.
Well, I mean, changing the name of the city officer, like, we don't have a general manager.
Right.
You know, so I would think stuff like that we can fix to be.
Can, can we, or not?
Yeah, I'd have to go back and see if, if we can.
Yeah, i- if there's items like that where it's, it's verbiage, I'm, I'm sure we can, a- and we can confirm with them as well, their specific comments.
Again, I'm happy to put, I do, I'll, I do want us to continue to plod forward on this project. I'm not, if you guys haven't gotten an indication in your communication with LCRA that we're behind the eight ball, or n- need to get it in ASAP, I'm fine with waiting another month on it, um, to answer, make sure that we have any i's dotted and t's crossed that, that you, that you think we need to, um, pro Tim Hudson. I'm, I'm happy to do that, if that's,
Okay.
if, if you don't think that we're gonna miss a, miss the boat between now and thirty days from now.
Yeah, and we could, we could ask that question directly. Um, I would recommend we get it in soon, but I also wanna make sure y'all are comfortable with what we're submitting, so I don't wanna.
Yeah, I don't, I don't feel the need to steamroll it through if we're not missing, you know, if we're not behind the curve, um, and I know that I know in my early conversations that that sort of was the impression I got, but then also when I said it was five hundred acre feet, they're like, oh, yeah, that's not what we were talking about. So, um, so if you wanna wait, we can, um, to give you a little bit more time. And I, and I'll, and obviously I've been on vacation, and I haven't, I've spent a little bit of time with it, but not a great deal of time, so.
So, question on this, a pen x B in here under, in the conservation plan, is the landscape conservation standard? Are those, I mean, it says this is similar to the Greater Austin Home Builders Sensible Landscaping for second, it's guidelines, but and there's a lot of stuff in here that I think would be really cool if we did, but I think there's a whole lot of stuff in here that a lot of people would go.
What?
Yeah, yeah, so, so just trying to understand what the, um, what the level of enforcement is on some of the things that we're representing, that we're going to do.
And maybe if, if we do put a pen in it for thirty days, um, I do think it probably would be helpful to us to know what they said you can't change. Um, because I, I agree with you, like, I don't want, I don't wanna cause a great deal of heartburn in the community. I also know that there would be more heartburn if if we don't have any water, so.
Well, and, I, are we even enforcing these, like, staged water restrictions now? I see people running their sprinklers. I see a lot of lawns that are obviously being run and, and watered in excess of the, uh, restrictions. I, I mean, my understanding is this is just up to us to enforce these things. LCRA doesn't have police going around writing tickets for people watering their grass.
Now, I think they have some audit provisions in here, um, and the fact that we are on electronic metering now gives them some additional tools to be able to monitor some of that, so I think that is ultimately in the contract, if, if I understand correctly, so. There is some oversight that they have the ability, but yeah, you're correct. I mean, it's more of a, a desk review than, than boots on the ground, I think, so. Okay, um, you wanna wait? Is that a?
I, I would, I would prefer to wait, yes.
Okay, um, then with no objection by council, we will, um, not take action on Agenda Item Number Twelve. Stay on call if you would, um, but we'll take a closer look at it and see what remaining questions. Uh, this is, we're definitely honing in on it. Um, I think this is a, a good document and getting closer than we were last month too. Um, in the meantime, as we prepare to reach back out to you, if y'all, if you would kind of send us either a highlighted version or a redlined version of what it is that is the no-go zone, and let us know what it is that we're not allowed to mess with. Okay, um, and obviously this is contingent, adoption of this plan is contingent on Agenda Item, um, uh, for contingent, contingent for Agenda Item Thirteen, correct? If we have to have this before we can do Thirteen.
Yeah, okay, sure.
Um, still, let's go ahead and lay out Agenda, so we'll move off of Agenda Item Number Twelve, taking no action, and move to Agenda Item Number Thirteen. Uh, consideration and possible action on approving the submission of a raw water application to the Lower, uh, Colorado River Authority. Go ahead, if you would, speak to it. Tell us what's in this versus, um, the document in Twelve, and then we can have a discussion about that. I'll, but we will not take action on that this evening.
Yeah, the, the application is, i- is mostly, uh, the past five years historic water use, um, for in the city, and, uh, projections of future water use.
Okay, any questions?
Should we have the city's address on here as the applicant instead of the Kay Fries' address?
Uh, yeah, we, we can. Uh, we, we did change it to our address, just as the, uh, since we did fill out the form. Uh, yeah, we, we can, uh, we, we did change it to our address, just as the, uh, since we did fill out the form, and that's kind of the verbiage there, uh, but we can, um, we have at the beginning, the applicant being the City of Rollingwood, but I just noticed the address is not city hall, so yeah, we can change that.
Right, I mean, it's a city's phone number and email address, but the ad- the address is not the city's, and I didn't know, I would think that we would want either the mayor or the city administrator to sign this, as the application for the, from the city? And not somebody at K-Freeze?
Okay, and, is that on the part of, like, the, uh, there's, there's two parts, like, the application, sorry, this may have been.
Well, page, page three of three, the, the application itself has, um, the signature line, and right now it has titled Project Engineer. And I would think that we would want the applicant to be a City of Rollingwood representative.
Yeah, that's fine. I see, yes. Yeah, 'cause there was some discussion before, there was somewhere where I could fill out the form, I think I was conflating the two, but yes, on page three of three, it absolutely, I can, I'd be happy to, after it's approved, sign off on it.
Any other items like that?
I just, well, question on the, um, the projected demands.
Yes.
I'm here, I, I don't know what all L C R A cares about, what, what they're looking at and, and what we're representing, but we've, we represent that the population is staying the same, or the expected population is not changing, and, and we're supposed to be implementing water conservation, so we're supposed to be using less water per person? And yet, the projected demands show an increase every year on the, oh, no, I'm backwards.
No, they go down.
They're going down, okay, I was read, I was, I was reading it the other way around, okay, that makes sense. I was sitting there going, why is the number getting bigger, but, but nothing is changing, okay, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Um, no, and on the, on the calculations, just trying to understand if this is the way L C R A really expects it, we've got, um, residential usage averages, and then we've got a total, the, the G P C D, whatever, um, we've got a total that includes the commercial, but that uses the same number of people, and that seems a strange way to calculate something, because the commercial use are by far larger volumes than the residential, but if you're just dividing by the same number of people, it makes the numbers look really big. Is that not something that we could, again, I don't know what they're, what they're using these numbers for, but it seems like it would make more sense to monitor the residential in one category and the commercial in a separate category, so that you would be tracking what you're doing by usage, and not, um, you know, like the commercial using L U Es or something, instead of, um, using the residents to divide into that number.
Yeah, I know, but, yeah, I mean, it's, it's pretty standard, when we do, you know, calculate water use on a unit that it is per capita per day, um, we've done some other cities in the area, and that's just kind of the standard, is you calculate your residential use, your commercial use, all the different uses, and then you just equate that to a per capita as a city. So I, it's a, it's kind of a blended unit.
It's, it's hard to, it's hard to track what a reasonable number is for a per capita, if you're including commercial and you don't have any idea what they're doing, when you're trying to track what's reasonable for residential use.
Yeah, uh, so we calculated it as a decrease of one percent water demand per year overall, and that's based on the city's current water conservation plan, um, and so that, uh, even though the, you know, gallons per capita per day i- is different for overall and for residential, both numbers go down at a one percent rate.
And you're basing on historical usage, right?
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
Still a crazy high number.
Yeah. Well, but your, your commercial use is getting socialized into the overall system, right, so that's why it's probably.
Right, it could be, just do very well bringing in other people in to shop in Rollingwood and go home.
Right, yeah. Okay. Any other? So I think we have a clear path on some homework that we have on the water conservation and drought contingency plan, is there anything in particular we need to take the opportunity in the next thirty days to look at on this, or is council generally okay with it, with the exception of some of these items, that changing the address and the signature line and some of those things?
Yeah, the only other question I had is on the, um, Exhibit C and D on the application, um, I guess it's one map that satisfies both requirements, but it, it has s- the outlined areas includes Westlake and Rollingwood?
Yeah, uh, this was an existing map that we used and determined would be satisfactory, and, um, we can confirm with L C R A if this type, I, well, I believe we did actually, um, before we even started the application process.
I believe this was a cost-saving mechanism, was it not?
Correct, yeah, yeah, they, they had them there to do a boundary survey, and so we confirmed with them that we don't need to get a surveyor to come and survey the entire city limit, so this is, I think, just something from, um, a C C N viewing map that shows those, and I believe, um, it shows, what you just don't see is the City of Austin boundaries, so I think that, that what that shows is just kind of the two Westlake Hills and Rollingwood.
Well, but you can't tell, you can't tell what the boundary of Rollingwood is, there's.
Oh, are you talking about that piece in the upper, like, north?
Yeah, I mean, you've got a big, a big area on the left, which is Westlake, and then you've got three areas that kind of say Rollingwood, but that's not all us. So it's, it's real hard to tell which, which part is Rollingwood and which part is, I don't even know what that other stuff is.
I think it's through Z I D ten, if I, if I, if I recall correctly.
Yeah, we can, we can go in and hash the Rollingwood a different color, um, just make that more pronounced.
Yeah, it just, I mean, if we're supposed to show where our bound- our boundaries are, it needs to be clear where our, where our boundaries are.
Yeah, I don't even know what some of these streets are, and it's.
Well, no, it's hard, it's hard, it's hard to tell, but I don't know what that little bitty dot is up on the, the top of that, and, and that other, that other section is,
Yeah.
No.
I don't know, City Austin or something, I think it's, I don't think it's Rollingwood, so.
So, Mr. Mayor, I'd suggest, you know, considering, um, that we, you know, approve the submission subject to Councilmember Hudson and, and K-Freeze and yourself, or whoever else on staff, if you have a look at it, being satisfied that, you know, that it's technically correct and cleaned up, I guess you could say, 'cause, I mean, in general, I, I support it, and I'm ready to vote to authorize you, that way, if y'all finish in the next week or two weeks, or if we don't have a quorum at our next meeting or something, that this still won't get held up anymore.
Yeah, that'd be great with me, and, and my commitment is to work with Councilwoman Hudson to make sure we've got all the I's dotted and T's crossed, yes, ma'am?
Sorry to interrupt, I just realized this, the map doesn't include the Rollingwood property on the south side of B Cave Road. So that needs to be addressed.
Yeah, we'll take a look at that.
And that's where most of commercial use is, plus a, um, planned unit development housing, H O A.
Okay. Yeah, well, yeah, we'll take a closer look at that.
Yeah, that must be.
Where did this map come from?
This is a, um, I don't know if it has a source on it, it's the, it's, uh.
Travis CAD, maybe?
Yeah, it's a.
Well, this.
Yeah, so just out of interest, the Public Utility Commission of Texas has a map that looks just like this, and the Rollingwood C C N there does not extend past B Cave. So it is consistent with what the state of Texas has, the P U C has this on file. So it might just be that even though we provide water there, we just might not be the C C N for there.
What does C C N stand for?
Certificate of Convenience and Necessity.
Exactly.
Well, you d- I'm pretty sure we provide the water for that part of.
We do.
Well, yeah, but.
Yeah.
We just made up.
It may not be, the P U C is not up to date, but we have a, you could compare this to the zoning map and at least know where Rollingwood boundaries are versus what's shown in the.
Yeah, but, but it's, C C, yeah, C C N's and, and, and.
But this is a. Don't necessarily.
And, and the city limits don't always match up.
Yeah.
Well, that, I know that.
Yeah.
Uh, but I think we do provide water to customers on this, on the south side of, of Rollingwood Drive.
We do.
We do, but what, what is this map being used for, if it's just one of the things that needs to be included, in fact, to the mayor's point, it, it's rather than pay to have another something created, like, if it's just kind of checking the box that, yes, there is a map. It's not really gonna affect whether we're supplying water.
I, I do think that's the purpose of this map, but now I am interested to know what our actual C C N footprint is, so.
Okay. I, I'd like to just make a motion now, then, that we approve and authorize the mayor to submit the raw, raw water application to the Lower Colorado River Authority, subject to his satisfaction that the application is complete and accurate, um, after, you know, seeking input from interested persons such as Councilmember Hudson and any staff.
All right, you have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
You have a motion by Mr. Sheen, a second by Mr. McDuffie, again, in discussion, it would not be my intent to submit said application until we're all on the same page, but I do appreciate, and, and if we can get it done in the next couple of weeks, then that would be the intent, so.
After wedding.
Yeah, well, and I've, ye- yes, well, I've got some scheduling things, too, but yeah, we will still try to knock it out before next month.
Just, for clarification, Exhibit C is supposed to be a recent survey or legal description of the subject property service area, including a boundary map, and D is a map showing the location of subject service areas, so if we include property on the south side of B Caves that we provide water to, it sounds like we need to show that.
We've got a zoning map that shows.
I saw that we have our own map that we could probably provide, and so. Okay, any further discussion, council, yes, ma'am? Okay. Sure, sure, come on up.
Shanti Jaykumar, thirty-three oh nine Park Hills Drive, so, um, this brought up a very interesting collection in my history files, and I'd like to share it, so the C C N number is the same that we had in nineteen seventy-five.
Okay.
Okay, and I've made some copies.
Leave it to you to have a C C N number in a file somewhere.
No, 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 it's, it's just, I, I'm passionate about this, so, anyway, so I just wanted to say that nineteen seventy-five, um, Mayor Helen Shaw, who was the first woman mayor of Rollingwood, that's when this application was submitted to the Public Utility Commission of Texas, and I, I'll give these copies to.
Actually, I want it.
So, what it says here, and again, this is fifty years ago, okay, um, the resp- I'm not reading all of it, just this last part, last part, the responsibility for the operation, maintenance, and ex- expansion of the water distribution system is under the direct supervision of City Alderman Earl P. Maxwell, City forty-eight fourteen Rollingwood Drive, Austin, Texas, and his telephone number, and the responsibility for the entire overall operation of all functions is Mayor Helen Shaw, office four oh three Nixon Drive, okay, and her telephone number, so, and then this, I have all the application and where it went and who signed, and.
Is there a map?
They had, no, there was no ma- and this, something that I went, when I was a council member, I went to the headquarters, wherever I had Microfish, I went through Microfish and got copies made, okay, but this is the document that was given, and I've got some copies, and here's your C C N number here, and Public Utility Commission, um, having been the City of Rollingwood, having duly applied for certificate to provide water utility service for the convenience and necessity of the public, and is, and it having been determined by this commission that the public convenience and necessity would in fact be advanced by the provision of such service by this applicant, is entitled to, and is hereby granted, the Certificate of Convenience and Necessity, numbered one zero nine four eight, which is exactly what you have here, um, to provide water utility service to that service area or those service areas designated by final order or orders duly entered by this commission, which order or orders are on file at the commission officer, offices in Austin, Texas, and are matters of official record, available for public inspection and be known for the, all that, okay, so they may have something, I'm gonna give all this to you guys.
Well, so. So I don't always engage with you in your history lessons, but I'm going to now, um, do you, do you know, do you recall, um, has that portion across B Caves Road always been in the city limits of Rollingwood, or did we take that in?
Tom knows the answer to that.
Okay.
Because he developed that, uh, shopping center.
So my guess is, it wasn't always.
Not at this time.
And we probably never amended the C C N, which is not necessarily a terrible thing, but.
Or it may be amended, it may be amended, since that was the first.
Or it may be.
This was the very first time, that was the very first.
But my guess is, it's not been amended, because this is.
The number doesn't change.
The number doesn't change, and this probably is reflective of how it was filed. So anyway, again, I don't know that it's the.
And, and, and C C N's weren't, well, water C C N's went back and forth between the P U C and the.
Right, Water Development Board, or whatever the previous name of the Water Development Board was.
But it may be that there were no customers in nineteen seventy-five.
Also true.
On that side of the road. But I'm just looking now, some of the commercial, I think the first thing to do would be to ask Veronica to confirm what accounts we have on that side, water
Yeah.
accounts we have on that side of B Cave's Road, um, and then y'all figure out what map includes that.
Right.
But I'm just looking now, like, one of the re- commercial customers that's listed in the application, um, is one of the properties, uh, it's the, um, uh, the building that's on Old, uh, Washed Harleton, the corner of Old Washed Harleton and B Caves Road. So, I, I think we're gonna find that there are customers, water service customers on that side of the.
Yeah, there definitely are.
Yeah.
Um, okay.
The other thing I wanted to say is, they applied in seventy-five, but the certificate was issued four years later, in nineteen seventy-nine, they had a, they, they had a system of water distribution from the wells.
Yeah.
We had only X number of homes, very few homes, so, they had a water distribution system, using Mr. Hatley's old
Water wells.
Oilfield industry, or pipes and stuff like that, you know, but it came, this, this kind of piqued my interest to go check through my records, and.
Yeah, yeah, very helpful.
I've given a whole bunch of these, whatever I had to.
Yeah, no, we just got them, so, that's perfect.
No, that's just the, that's just the form of.
Okay, we'll, we'll run copies of them.
I gave us some other stuff there, okay.
Perfect, thank you.
Just thought I'd.
No, that's great, K F A, I've got a question for you. So, again, I don't know that it's a problem, if we have some of our city that's now not in the C C N, is it?
No, the C C N basically just means you have the exclusive right to serve that area, so that area, I looked on the, that's outside of the C C N. So that area I looked on, that, that's outside of the CCN, so they could technically request City of Austin to serve, sort of serve them utilities if they want.
Yeah, 'cause the CCN is our, is our obligation.
No one else can serve within your CCN.
And it's, it's not, it's not that we're precluded from serving outside of it, we just not are, we're not obligated to.
That's correct.
Not to freak anybody out who's outside of it, but.
Yeah.
Um, and I wouldn't be opposed to amending our CCN, but that's cost and time and.
Well, I think the first thing is to find out if it's.
The, yeah, I pulled up the latest map that's online that is still, that is still the accurate, or the, the latest that they show, the PUC shows.
And all of our calculations are based on all of our water usage.
Correct, yeah, in the application, we do have all the commercial customers and several of those are on that south side of the.
So we're still accounting for those even outside of the CCN.
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, well, this has been informative, nothing else, so. All right, any other questions? Um, you do have a motion before you, uh, motion by Mr. Gashene, second by Mr. McDuffie, uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no, being four ayes, no nays, motion carries, uh, thank you, council, we'll work on that, I am now going to go back to agenda item number twelve. Because the action that you took on thirteen, um, is irrelevant, if you do not take action on number twelve. If you would like to make a similar motion on twelve, um, same rules would apply, we would not move forward with either, uh, twelve or thirteen unless, um. Staff and myself and Kay Fries and Sarah are all on the same page, but I would be willing to take a motion.
So I've moved to authorize the mayor to. Approve a water conservation plan and drought contingency plan based on the plan that's been submitted and subject to any, um, modifications and clarifications.
Thank you, Mr. Gashene, Mr. Gashene has a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion by Mr. Gashene, a second by Mr. McDuffie, is there further discussion? Again, my intent would not be to move forward unless we have consensus, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no, being four ayes, no nays, motion carries, thank you, council, we will work on that with staff and Kay Fries and Sarah, um, and try to get this knocked out before next month. Uh, with that, we will move on, thanks, Kay Fries, appreciate it. That will move on to agenda item number fourteen, discussion and possible action on the purchase of up to five, uh, license plate readers in an amount not to exceed fifteen thousand to monitor roadways. Entering Rollingwood, uh, I mistakenly thought this was Ms. Brown's agenda item, it is not, it is Mr. Gashene's agenda item. Recognize Mr. Gashene first, and then we do have, um, our chief here to answer any questions.
And of course, I'm most interested in hearing what chief has to say about it now at this point, but, um, I'll tell you that I've. Gotten a lot of feedback from the community in support of the idea of the cameras, there's been some public discussion about privacy concerns, there are certainly some people who still have privacy concerns, but. I think the, my sense is that the, um, a large majority of the public supports this, uh, move. Um, and just to reiterate for the record or anyone that watches, I, I think the two things that the cameras really do for us are give live. Notifications when a stolen vehicle enters Rollingwood, which is good because stolen vehicles are usually up to no good. And I think we've heard before, it makes sense that if somebody's gonna come into town and do a burglary or of vehicles or homes, that using a stolen vehicle is a good way to do it, right?
Correct.
Um, so that would, uh, help maybe, uh, catch somebody, uh, in the act or prevent, uh, a burglary. Um, and then the other thing, of course, is that, you know, we do have, um. A lot of home security cameras, Ring cameras, that might identify a make and model of a vehicle or a time of an incident, but. Won't necessarily have the illumination or the resolution to capture a license plate, and so we could take that information, or homeowner says, you know, there was a, uh, a, uh. Dark blue Chevy pickup truck at three thirty in the morning, then you can go and retrieve data from the license plate readers to try to identify who that vehicle tracks to. Um, so those are the two things that, as I understand it, and like you to confirm that for us, but I, I also believe that, um. You know, it's very disturbing when you have people masked burglars breaking into vehicles as they did last weekend, or tried to, and, you know, I've had.
They were unsuccessful, the vehicle was locked.
Good, good.
And we were not notified.
Okay, good, and of course, I'm not, I'm not saying that to be.
Not good, we, we would like to be notified.
I know, we've had a lot of discussion about, you know, crime, break-ins, vehicle burglaries, and, and, and I do wanna also add that. I think that, you know, the police department's done a great job of dealing with all the issues as best they can, and it is also true that. You know, when the public's discussions start about crime and there's a vehicle break-in, you know, the community tends to respond that, oh, we're having the crime wave, you know, why is this happening? And we've had lots of, you've given us a lot of good information about that, including how it tends to spike with Austin's crime break-ins, you know, those groups move through the community. It's not just Rollingwood, it's, you know, it's gonna be a general, a general NSA problem, but, um. In any case, I, I do think it's a good tool, I think on as far as the privacy concerns, I understand that the data is actually held by the company that operates the cameras and you can access it if you have a. An active criminal investigation or investigative need for it, and, you know, given the, um. Fact that we get our license plates read every time we go down a toll road already, uh, I just don't feel too. Much like my privacy's being invaded if we're also reading license plates here for, um, law enforcement purposes, that's my view of it, um, like, like to hear what you say.
And that is correct, and, and I wanna reiterate that an officer cannot pull data unless it is for a law enforcement need. And there, there are safeguards for that, they have to, either we can create it to where you have to provide a case number. And you do have to identify why you are searching that information, so it's not a. Nilly willy per se, that we just wanna see who's moving around at, at this time, there has to be a specific need, and, um, then. Just to kind of reiterate is like, yes, this is what, this is why we're trying to, um, put these cameras in place, is to provide that. Kind of that secondary eyes upon the city that if an officer is not in the area and, and can catch them, um. And it, like I said, it does provide that data, we did have a discussion with Flock and Councilwoman Brown yesterday, um, and it was a very good discussion, we have received. Um, today, the contract terms of agreement, so we can kind of look at that, just also see how the information is safeguarded, what the contract looks like. Um, legal has not been able to have eyes on that, we haven't been able to go through that in detail either, um, as far as staff is concerned. Um, but I think we are sitting in a good, um, position, we did talk about how the data is encrypted, um, when that. The picture is taken, um, and also we talked about any metadata and, and things like that, so. We're learning more on the back end to, like I said, that way people are comfortable that they're. Not a third party is gonna come in and purchase their, their data or anything like that, I mean, so there's so many other safeguards, we also are, um, gonna be receiving some MOUs. And what that does is it, so we already have some MOUs in place with other cities that we provide law enforcement services, that we would back them up. Um, we have it with West Lake Hills, we have it with Sunset Valley, with City of Austin, and so what this do, uh, what we talked about too is also. Creating a data MOU that if we do share our, um, our data for the flock, that they can see. If one of their vehicles came into our city and, and vice versa, is that we also have parameters on that. Um, just so not anybody can access it at any point, that there, again, is law enforcement need, um, to be able to obtain that information. But it creates this network, um, that we want along with, uh, other agencies, that way we can, like I said, create that database. So if there's, so that's kind of where we're at right now, is we also, like I said, we received that information today. That we're gonna review, and then we also are setting up another meeting with, um, hopefully with council and, um, with Councilwoman Brown, that way any discussion, or if y'all have any questions that. Y'all need some clarity or you're getting any feedback from the residents, that we can definitely bring forward and have Flock answer.
Okay, thank you.
And what, what is the cost?
So, this is listed for five, we actually, um, are proposing seven, which is at twenty-one thousand.
Per, per?
So it's three thousand per camera.
And that's per year?
Per year, that's correct, and that's for the installation, and, um, one of the other things that I know that we were kind of also looking at is if we wanna see if we can. Possibly do a trial run with them, that we can also provide to flock, um, if that's something that y'all wanna see, if.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
The, the three thousand per year per camera, does that ever go down, it's not higher the first year?
No, sir.
Okay.
No, they do typically have an installation charge, but we spoke with them yesterday, we negotiated that down to nothing for an installation charge.
Correct.
And then, um, you know, when you're talking about a trial period, it seemed to me that that's essentially a termination clause, so we, uh, you know, what is the termination? Um, arrangements, if we decide after six months, we don't like them anymore, we paid for a year, so I suppose it's a year by year deal, right?
That is correct.
So we could non-renew it any year we wanted to.
Correct.
Okay. So essentially, the trial period would be the first year.
Pretty much, and, um, I mean, we can see if they can prorate it and just do it, you know, at six months, um.
Yeah, I mean, you could ask them, if we decide in the first year to terminate, could you, um, you know, reduce that?
Okay.
You know, it would be a way, but, I mean. Just an, need, sounds like it just needs a little final negotiating and legal, uh, review.
Correct.
Okay, um, I have a couple of things, so, as you know, I'm not wild about this idea, I am one of those that has privacy concerns, but that said, I'm not overly passionate about it, and. Whatever council decides to do, we will execute to perfection, um, but I do have a few things. That I want you to consider.
Okay.
In your discussions, um, one is just the logistic, the power needs, so I, I need.
Solar.
It is all, which is great. But not all of our entrances, some of them are shaded, and so.
Okay.
Get, get. Um. So let, I just want some sight on that, because, um, I assume they would install, but I want Public Works there to make sure. That we kind of understand how it's being installed and where the solar, you know, at, how big is the solar panel, where does it go?
Right.
Can it be thirty feet away, or does it have to be right there, so some of those types of things.
Okay.
Um.
I know when we were kind of looking at the map, and they were looking at tree canopies to see exactly where we could place them.
Okay.
Um, but definitely will.
And, and, and we don't have to have it next to the entrance sign, I mean, we can, let's talk about that, but that's the sort of thing that's in my head of like, okay, where is this gonna go, how big is the solar panel, where does that go?
Yeah, a map showing marked proposed locations would be really good on a satellite view.
Right.
Map.
So, anyway, just some thought to that, and if there is additional cost for the power needs, maybe, and it sounds like there's not, but, um. I assume that they and you have given some thought to a data retention policy, and if we need to adopt such a policy.
That is correct.
And what that would look like, and, and what, how long that data retention is, and in my mind, the, the shorter the better, um.
So the proposal is thirty days.
Okay.
And the reason being is, I, so. We have found out that City of Austin has seven days on theirs, we looked at some T-SLAX up, which is, uh, the state library, and we. Were under the assumption that it had to be thirty days, so there are some things that we're gonna look at with City of Austin, it's had a date, what.
I mean, thirty days sounds a little long to me, if some, if a vehicle's broken into, or there's a, something that we need to pull data on, you, you should know that within a day. Um, and I would think two weeks would give you enough time for that.
And that is, so, we do have issues where people do not report for over a week.
Okay.
Well, if you're on vacation, and you come home and go, oh, look, somebody broke into my house.
Yeah, and the data's gone, that would be a little disturbing.
Yeah. Okay, we'll give that some thought, um.
Okay.
But also that if I, if we need to, if council needs to adopt a policy around that, we need to know what that is and what it looks like.
Correct.
Um, and I assume part of that probably goes hand in glove with, uh, a Public Information Act poli- I mean, there is no policy. It, PIA is what it is, um, but we need to have our arms around that, can anyone request the data? Um. Who can request the data, can you withhold the data if it's not, if, do you, is everything considered law enforcement, and if so, you have some leeway on your public information request?
Right, and you're not, so, we wouldn't have that data unless you're telling me to pull the data. Does that make sense, so?
We're not custodians of the data.
We are, we own the data, but unless, you're asking me to create that report for your PIR.
Right.
Cause otherwise, I don't know what they have.
A- a- and all I'm, it, it is not out of the realm of possibility around this neighborhood that I love.
Right.
That somebody could just wanna know who was next door. And that ain't a business that I'm interested in being in.
Correct.
So, um, I would like to know the details around what that public information request. Would need to look like, and, and what our options are in having to be in that business or not.
Is it even subject to a public information?
Is it, right, cause in my, in my, it may not be if it is, if it's owned by PD, because everything is potentially.
Right.
Part of an investigation.
And I have talked to other cities as well, and they, that, that's the thing, is they, they're, it's, yes, we own, but we have not pulled that data. In, in other words, the data sits in a cloud. Correct. All, all the, all the shots of the license plates sit in a cloud owned, uh, that Rollingwood controls access to.
Right.
No data is pulled from that unless the chief says we need to find license plate numbers so and so. And so in the terms of a Public Information Act request, you know, you couldn't be asking for your neighbor's data if there hasn't been a law enforcement. Uh, reason to pull that data, it, it would just be sitting in a database, so. That's one of the things we talked about yesterday, but I think we've gotta have Charlie's firm assess that question.
Right.
Correct.
Because, uh, let's use this attempted break-in that occurred last week. Individual gets out, and the vehicle goes, tries to, tries to open a vehicle, is, it's locked, so they get back in their vehicle and drive off. Now, other than a trespass, there's really been no law broken in that scenario, correct?
Attempted burglary.
I mean, you have attempted, yeah, attempted burglary.
Do you?
Yeah. They try to open a car that doesn't belong to them.
I do, my cousin, I mean, I don't, you, you would have to prove that, I mean, but my point is. And I, I'm not necessarily saying I'm opposed to it, I'm just trying to get a sense of what type of, uh, manpower is behind. Cause I would feel violated if that happened to me.
Right.
And I would want you to do something about it, and so, how, okay, I want you to, well, there wasn't. I don't really have anything, I'm PD, I don't really have a lot to work from, I want you to pull, I want to know who that, I want to know who tried to break into my vehicle. So I'm doing a public information request, I want all of that data, and I wanna know, who, I want you to run the plate. And I don't care if they're in Hayes County or Houston or wherever, I want them cited, that's what I would do. Which I'm not saying that's a terrible thing, I'm just saying, let's think through the manpower that we're committing to in that scenario, again, that's what I would do. Not saying that that's something that we shouldn't do, but I do think we need our arms around what type of manpower we're committing to in that scenario.
So at least for that scenario, and I'm comfortable with my answer, but I'll also look at our legal counsel, because that would be part of an active criminal investigation, that would be withheld completely. We could shut that down right away.
It would, and then I'm gonna call chief every day to find out if she has issued the citation.
She's not gonna acquiesce.
In Harris County, like, drive down Harris County, I wanna, I wanna, I want the. in Harris County, like, drive me out of Harris County, I wanna, I wanna, I want the guy, anyway, I'm just
Right.
Again, I'm not saying I'm opposed to any of that.
Because the other thing is too, I mean, so we also need to understand, Flock is a investigative tool, it is not probable cause. So,
Right, and I'm gonna let you explain all of that to everybody when they do their public information request, yes, ma'am.
The other, in, being on that call yesterday, uh, the other issue that came up was with whom will Rollingwood, uh, collaborate for, let's say, Austin calls, and they say, we want you to run your database for license plate X Y Z. So, one, one issue is, is that gonna overwhelm our
Right.
police department, or what limits do we put on it, or how do we handle that?
Right, and that's the, that's the type of
Yes.
thing I want us to think about, because, you know, our five incidents that we're asking Austin to run is one thing, their five hundred incidents that they're asking us to run, different thing.
Right, right.
And maybe that's easy, I don't know, I, I have no idea how this works, but.
Unless we have the data MOU, and they are able to access our data.
Right.
And then it, then it wouldn't be so much of a manpower issue.
But then we've given City of Austin access to our data, maybe that's okay. But I don't vote for anybody in the City of Austin, and so if they misuse it, or don't adhere to the policy, or whatever it is.
Right.
I, we've got not, we've got no leg to stand on with complaining to them about it. Probably, unless it's in the MOU, I, I don't know, I don't know what's in the MOU, so.
Right.
Uh, it's just not, it's not, again, we'll do it if, if that's what the policy is that we choose, but it's, it's not necessarily as easy. I mean, it could be, it could be easy every day, but it's easy until it's not.
Where I am on this is that, I think, I think being as close as we are to Silver Park, and there being opportunity for active shooter incidences there. We've had this situation where we had a group of, uh, street racers gather in the parking lot at the grocery store, and then go downtown. If any of those, you know, if life can be saved by this, or someone, bad guy caught, I think it's a good idea, but I think it's important to figure out exactly what we're gonna do with it upfront.
I agree.
Like on which agencies we share with, and which we don't.
Right.
And, uh, on the call yesterday, um, and, or maybe this was Chief Munoz's, uh, homework on it. Uh, you can identify other users of the Flock system, and the data will show you how many times they have either had, initiated their own request, or had um, a, uh, city with whom they're sharing their data initiated requests. So, that's the kinda stuff that, with a little time, we can nail down and note, and, and say, here's the options on that.
Yeah.
Here's a concern, here's options.
Right. Good.
I think you had, did you have something to add?
If it, if it's helpful, I'll just add a few things to think about, I, I think it does, like the mayor said, need further review. Um, Flock has been around for a while, and these issues have come up, and I've actually negotiated agreements with Flock for large entities, and there are other uses, it's not just the stolen car, it's if there's a pattern of behavior, uh, for example, if there's sexual assaults within the neighborhood, you can use the data to connect how many times, you know, a s- a particular vehicle has come in, and if it matches up to dates and times and locations, it can help with other investigations. Um, but as far as the Public Information Act, you know, there's no duty to create new reports, to, to create new documents. And then there's gonna be terms of use for the technology that's held by an outside entity um, that restrict access. Uh, it, and if it's for, there's also a law enforcement exception in the Public Information Act, so there's, there's plenty of things that the vendor, and law enforcement groups, and agencies, and even the, um, privacy advocates have thought through with this technology, it's not like LPRs are a brand new thing, they've been here for a while. And, and there were significant concerns when they were first introduced over a decade ago. And a lot of those issues have been thought through. Now, you do want to look at the contract, you wanna make sure that there's no language that says they can use the data for any permissible business usage, that would be too broad, you need to have those restrictions. And, so I think of this a lot like, uh, um, FBI data, or Texas Department of Public Safety data. There's gonna be strict policies and controls on who can access and when. And, and it's just not the, simply the kinda thing that's gonna be a free for all for third-party commercial interests, or for anyone just requesting that information, but you do wanna vet it, and make sure that there are, uh, good policies. And as far as the MOUs, you may wanna do an inter-local agreement, more of a binding contract, not just a memorandum of understanding, but an inter-local agreement with some structure and controls over who you're sharing that with, and that it is just for law enforcement purposes. So, hopefully that's helpful.
Yeah, it is helpful, thank you. That's Brown.
Well, my email to Charlie said, do you have any partners that have negotiated these contracts?
He took it so, he took it so seriously that he sent him. Yeah, he got COVID and sent him.
We need you.
Yeah, there you go. Um, and then my last point, and then I'll, uh, leave it, is, uh, what I mentioned earlier, if this is something that council is considering, uh, uh, Kevin or any other council member, I encourage you to bring it, uh, an exceptional item that we can add for consideration next month. Didn't mean to choke you up. Any other questions for Chief, anyone? Well, I lost my agenda item sponsor.
So, as far as any kind of agreements with Austin or anybody else, um, you're suggesting that we create, so we don't only be, again, with an active investigation, are we able to put that kind of restriction on it? Because I know there's been concern over in Austin that some law enforcement people might been pulling information outside of that.
So we would require it, cause you can actually mandate it as a field, that they have to actually put a case number in for law enforcement.
Yeah, I would want, I would want that boundary placed on any information if we choose to
Agree.
have any kind of agreement to, to, to share it with any other jurisdictions. And, of course, we would have that inside of Rollingwood as well, that
Correct.
they can't just pull it.
And, as an agency, I mean, that's why we also would conduct audits, uh, of our own, um, to ensure that we are adhering to policy.
I think keeping the data for thirty days is entirely appropriate, given how many times people leave for the entire summer. I mean, I, I, I personally don't have a problem with retaining the data even longer than thirty days, given the fact that sometimes people leave for an entire three months in the summer, or, or something like that. Given the fact that we have the restriction based on, has to be an active criminal investigation, that type of stuff. I don't really see the time parameter as being, uh, a sticking point that the data needs to disappear at a tight time interval, or, or any time interval for that matter. That's just me.
I'm, I have a question. What would you say if we, uh, wanted to consider maybe installing two or three of these things instead of all seven? You know, there goes.
Uh, I have no issues, I mean, so this was kind of brought as a response to, um, the burglaries. And so if this is something that the council chooses, where they only want to install three, I am okay with that, and we can do a test run with that as well. Like I said, this is kind of a response to
Sure.
um, was bringing other avenues that we can, um, provide to you.
I guess I'm thinking of, you know, most of the major traffic is gonna come in on Rollingwood Drive on either end of it, right? Is what I'd guess, those are
For the most part, yes, sir.
high-traffic locations. Um, and if somebody's coming to Rollingwood from, you know.
But I would say, again, I'm not wild about it, but if you're gonna do it, I would do all of it.
Okay, I would agree.
Yeah, because
We're talking about it in here, and so we go, oh, you're not putting them on all the, so let's figure out which one's not covered, we'll go in that way, right?
Yeah, that's, that's where I am.
They're physical, you can see them.
Right.
Well, and that was the other point, which is, you know, when we were talking about having a map and showing where they are, it's not, not wise to really.
I, I, it was, I have a hard time believing that people who break into cars at three in the morning are doing a bunch of research on their criminal act.
Yeah, probably not, but.
I have a hard time believing that they're not gonna put duct tape over their license plates, but that's, that's just me too, but.
You're clever.
Criminal mind.
Do seem to remember using like the cardboard from the bottom of a case of beer to cover a license plate once, and when I was a teenager.
The statute of limitations has expired, I guess.
Pulling over a car if they've got any.
Still get the make and model, I guess.
Right.
Okay, any other questions for Chief, any other, uh, any action to be taken on this?
Sounds like we're, it's not ready for action, but it's a good discussion, and let's bring it back next month, and.
Okay, and if you would get with Chief, and if, if you do want to bring, uh, a budget item, please, please do so.
Yes, please, and if there's any, uh, questions that you want answered between even now and to the next council, uh, meeting, please, I mean, that way we can contact Flock and get those answers for you.
Well, well, I can tell you I'd like a budget item for it for the twenty-one thousand.
I just let Alan.
Yes, I'll put that on there, would, would the preference of the council be to bring it back next month as seven license plate readers with adjusted value, or as five?
Yes.
Seven?
And adjust the budget number.
Yes.
Okay, all right, with that, we will move off of Agenda Item Number fourteen, uh, with no action, and move on to Agenda Item Number fifteen. Discussion and possible action on the responsibility for the maintenance operation of wastewater collection systems. Uh, this is, uh, mine and staff's Agenda Item Council, and, um, I will tell, I will start out by saying, the draft that's in front of you is a little bit more, um, inclusive than what I, um, meant for it to be, so let me, let me tell you what the important, um, aspect is of this in my mind, and that is to, um, for lack of a, a better way to explain it, we have a need to differentiate the pipes from the pumps. Um, and so we need to make sure that we have clarity in our ordinance, that the responsibility lies with the homeowner. Um, for their system related to their, um, uh, their wastewater, um, lines, their pipes. Uh, irrespective of who is going to have responsibility for the pump itself, for the grinder pump itself. Um, and we had a little, we had an issue where there was some, a gray area around this. Um, where, when, when we had a, an issue with a grinder pump, the grinder, and also important here is to have some clarity in our, in our ordinance of where grinder pumps need to be placed. They, they, they don't need to, we don't need to allow them to be placed within the structure. Um, which is a situation that we have run into, uh, a time or two. And so we need clarity in the ordinance to make sure that those are outside in an accessible area. And that the line that comes out of the residence to the pump, and then from the pump to the check valve, is the res- the, the line itself is the responsibility of the homeowner. Now, the way this is drafted also makes the full responsibility and the replacement cost, and all of the cost of the pump itself, the way this is drafted, uh, that would also fall to the homeowner, I think, based on previous discussions, uh, discussions around doing a fee on the lines and that sort, my, my sense is, this council's probably, doesn't have an appetite to put that cost burden at this time fully on all homeowners. And that was a miscommunication that I had, um, in asking this to be drafted. If, if you want to leave it that way, I'm fine with that, I do think it would cause some consternation. And so, if, if that is not your desire, the sim- the, the way to correct that is to simply take out the stricken lang- to leave the language as it is, um, online, on lines fifty through fifty-four, uh, where it's, right now it's stricken to say thereafter, the city may repair and replace subsequent grinder pumps to serve the property in accordance with policies and budgets adopted from time to time by the council, city council, provided that the property owner or other person with appropriate authority grants to the city's agents permission to enter the property for such purpose. So that's stricken right now, um, and I'm fine with you not striking that and just leaving it as is. But what's important here is to make sure we have placement, um, some placement clarity of where the pumps need to go from this point forward. And also clarity in that the responsibility of the pipes, the lines themselves, um, separate from the pump is the responsibility of the homeowner. So, hopefully I avoided what I anticipated to be a fight.
Uh, Ms. Mayor, um, I thank you for those comments, uh, as y'all know, I have, uh, drafted a memo, and I did that because, um, these grinder pumps, looking at the invoices over the past year or so from crossroads to the city, are from thirty-five hundred to forty-five hundred, and the situation you talked about, the cost ended at twenty thousand or more.
Correct.
And if we did, if we adopt that in, uh, this ordinance, then that cost would immediately shift to the homeowner.
Correct.
Uh, but homeowner, uh, there's not anything in the ordinance that makes it, uh, that requires, um, or allows the city to specify what kinda pump, what kinda line, what kinda pressurization. And when I went through the other or- the ordinances of other hill country properties that have our kind of elevation change, almost all of them said, yes, customer, uh, customer, this is on the customer's property, but the city will require you meet these, that the system meet these specs. We're gonna charge that to you, and we're going to maintain it, the, the utility, uh, maintain it. In order that people don't do a do-it-yourself line.
Right.
People don't fail to maintain and have these outages like we've been having, where it's, um, unforeseen because we're not, our city isn't actually doing a regular maintenance, or know the life of that pump, uh, to know when it needs service, we're not doing any regular service on them, it's the city's pump, no regular service is being done. So, what I, my gut feel on this is, yes, it's appropriate, and most of them also have a, a penalty to the homeowner, typically the cost of repair, if the homeowner is flushing grease, eggshells, wipes, other things that shouldn't be going through the grinder pump. And
Wipes are the killer.
Well, and, and grease.
Yeah.
Uh, apparently, from reading some of this stuff. But when I, what I had not appreciated, well, cause I've had a grinder pump when I had a septic tank, that grinder pump just got the sewage to the septic tank, and it went to the septic field. Now, the grinder pump is pushing that sewage into the city system. And so, th- there's a reason to have
Right.
that part of the pipe uniform. You don't want me coming in at, you know, I don't know, five pounds per square inch, and Kevin coming in at twenty-five, because everything's gotta be balanced, as we know from all the repairs we've had. So, my thought is that we should come up with a requirement that, uh, some portion of, you know, there'd be a surcharge for grinder pumps of some amount, that's fair, predictable. It cover, um, replacement of the pump in the event the pump fails. And also have the city take responsibility for, uh, maintenance of the pump and the pipe from the pump to the, or, the pump to the of the pump and the pipe from the pump to the, or the pump to the uh street. It is the customer's property and the customer's facility, but they contract through a service agreement that the city is going to do that part of the service so that we can ensure uniformly. And.
And I would be fine with the specifications, the cost that you referenced a moment ago, that, that cost that we got into was, was because of, of us needing to take care of that, that line.
That, that would be, you know, the, the, and that's an unusual situation.
It was, that's granted, yeah.
Uh, and, and we've gotta figure out where those in uh unusual situ, we've gotta figure out where those unusual situations are. But I think there's a benefit to the city and the operation of the wastewater system that the city regularly review those pumps and um have some um uh inspection of the line as it, the pressurized line as it enters the city's wastewater main. There, the uh attachments, you can read through uh the attachments to my memo, have uh copies of the um or outlines of the policies and sometimes the actual ordinances or the ordinance language. But I, I would think we could get, and, and for the most part, Crossroads and Hydrasource who are doing this work today within the city of Rollingwood at the request of Rollingwood, some of, they're the ones that also um are the typical contractor for these other hill country properties as well, hill country jurisdictions. But I think if, if we have Crossroads come and talk to us about this or have them come and talk to the utility commission, we'll come up with a policy that gives the city some assurance that we're not gonna be hit with a hundred thousand dollars worth of grinder pumps in any one year. But we also have a policy that we're not, customers aren't um that, that, that the customer connection from the pump to the, to the wastewater main is uh a proper, it, it's efficient and adequate and reliable for pursuits of the city.
Right. Okay. Yes, sir?
So that's why I'm recommending that we send this to the utility commission and uh give them the opportunity to use services at Crossroads to advise them on those questions and have a recommendation come back.
Okay.
So um I'm familiar with the issue that led to this and I kinda understand, you know, what you're trying to do here. And, and I support this ordinance. I'd be glad to see us pass it um as drafted, except that I would um not delete the language in there that um basically says the city's gonna take care of the grinder pumps.
Right.
And leave that language in there because, you know, I understand the arguments for getting citizens to pay for grinder pumps, but I can tell you that when I mentioned this in one of my newsletters I sent out to the residents, I got a lot of feedback from both sides of the issue. I bet I got a dozen emails and even some phone calls. And there were very strong feelings on both sides of the issue. And I was surprised that people were that worked up over it, but um they are, they were. And I just don't think we need to, that it's worth um um stirring up um the issue um of who's gonna pay for the grinder pumps. I think we leave that alone and we solve the problems that we have to solve immediately, which are um, you know, making sure that the pumps are located in an appropriate location and that it's clear that the residents are responsible for their sewer line all the way to the tie-in to the city line. And I think that's what this ordinance does.
That, that's what it was intended to do. It does, admittedly goes a little further than I intended, but.
So I would just, I would just, just leave the itch, table the issue of who's paying for grinder pumps and not take it up right now. And if we wanna get the utility commission to study that issue, I, I have no problem with that. Um, but I, you know, I, I'm not gonna be, I'm doubtfully ever gonna be in support of changing that um um policy as to who pays. But anyway, so I, whenever it comes time to promotions, I don't wanna cut anyone else off, but that's what I would support.
That's fine. Anyone else? Phil?
Well, just my read from last time we went around this with the utility commission. Uh, they didn't want to weigh in on.
Correct.
Who pays for or doesn't pay for, so if we send it back to the utility commission, I think their recommendation is likely going to be no action or an action or, you know, they're gonna give us a menu to basically tell the city council to.
To whatever.
To do your job and, and make the decision.
Yeah.
Or punt it.
Right, and, and really if, and, and I'll spend some more time with this. If I could figure out how to draft this without mentioning the word grinder pump, that would be fine with me. Um, and I'll work on, I'll work toward that. Um, because I do think the immediate issue is about where the grinder pump goes. Um, and, and the lines going to the pump and coming out of the pump to the main. I think that, that's, that's the real issue that we stumbled upon that I really wanna try to get corrected. Um, and then we can have the grinder pump discussion ongoing and figure out.
I mean, I do think at some point visiting that i- if people are using thing or, or putting things through the grinder pump that is destroying grinder pumps and that becomes a bigger, and it possibly would be a bigger problem, that we might wanna preemptively just kind of look, i- if we determine that there has been abuse and if you have a grinder pump, we will make sure you have information on what can and cannot be put toward your grinder pump. But if you break these rules and your grinder pump breaks, it's gonna be on your cost. I do think that would be appropriate for us to revisit and, and do something like that in the future. But um.
And, and one thing actually I would probably add to, 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 which is start, begins on line sixty-four, that I, I would like to call out that the grinder pump may not be located indoors. It, it may not be in, inside the, inside the residence. And you might think to yourself, well, of course it wouldn't be.
Right, no.
And you might be wrong in some instances around here.
I, I think you could require, and I don't know if it's clear in here, but on new construction, you would expect them to.
Right, and that's why I want something in here so that we can catch it in that, in that initial phase and say, whoa, what are you doing?
But, but even the, the, uh assuming that the new construction is gonna pay for the ins, the initial grinder pump anyway.
Right, right.
Right.
This is just maintenance and replacement.
This is, yes, just.
Yeah, I think that's entirely appropriate.
Yeah.
And that's already understood, maybe, I don't know.
Do we have a list of all of the grinder pumps?
Yes.
So we know, we know which residents.
We do.
Have grinder pumps.
We do, and some businesses have grinder pumps too.
Well, right, which, which accounts have grinder pumps?
Yes, ma'am.
And again, not.
Oh, sorry.
Not to beat a dead horse, but my understanding is at the time that we converted over from septic to sewer, people were pretty much mandated to, to do this. I do think it's appropriate that we continue to uh as a city absorb that cost because that was the understanding that they went in. But for new construction, to, to Mr. Gleschin's point, I do think it's appropriate that a new construction, they'd pay for their grinder pump. Now whether, I do think, once they get it in there, as long as they don't do abuse, I think, you know, it might be appropriate and it is my feeling, it would be appropriate for the city to have them as one of our cities free to, to, as long as it wasn't abused, to continue to service their grinder pump going forward from there.
Yeah, I mean, I think we'd have to, like, even if the new build puts, uh, has to put a grinder pump in, it would still then fall under the same rules as everybody else.
Yeah, right. Right.
Yes, ma'am?
Um, two comments. Uh, one, uh, most of these other cities with respect to flushing of prohibited items have something that says if there is a repair and it's determined that the, the, the repair was necessitated by flushing the prohibited items, then the homeowner will pay the cost of the repair, which.
Yeah, and that may be a, a more appropriate first step. Um, yeah, I would agree with that. I mean, that's putting the incentive in the right place.
It's putting the incentive in the right place.
Right.
And then the, the um second comment is that the way this is drafted, there's an application for residential connections and an application for commercial connections. But we've got two grinder pumps in the park property, the whack park property, and the terms are the same for residential and commercial. So I think we just have one grinder pump policy.
Yeah, I think the reason we um chose to put the commer, there, so it was silent on commercial right, right now? Like, we had nothing governing commercial grinder pumps?
Connections to the sewer, yeah, I understand.
Yeah, and, and, um, so that's kinda what we were thinking on that, um.
I don't have a problem with commercial users paying for grinder pumps.
That's kinda where we were too.
I don't either.
Well, if, yeah, I don't have a problem.
And those are bigger, those are usually larger grinder pumps.
Be a lot more expensive.
Right.
But I, I think we need to, we haven't covered zones other than residential and commercial. And we have grinder pumps in zones other than residential and commercial.
Well, and obviously we would have to cover our own, our own costs, but, but I'm.
We have institutions.
That's true, yeah, that's fair.
Hospital, PUD, and Park.
Right, good point, good point. Okay.
It does, we, we, we have a definition of where the service responsibility lies on our water system because we have a meter.
Right.
And that clearly defines, it's like on this side of the meter, it's yours and for the meter here, it's the city's, right? And we don't have that for the.
That's what makes this difficult.
We don't have that for the wastewater, which I think is important that we have. I would push back a little bit on that, we weren't required to put in, to hook up to the sewer. It was, it was an option. So.
Uh, we weren't required to put in?
When, when the sewer was put in, nobody was required to sign up. And it was a choice. You choose to sign up and have your s, your home hooked into the sewer system. So.
People felt that they were strongly encouraged to do so.
Well, and the, the other, with respect to grinder pumps, there was an offset, if you were willing to have a grinder pump, then the sewer system didn't have to be dug so deep that it would be below your, the floor of your house. And so there was, you know, and when I was reading through these other policies, you know, it benefited the cost at the front end of the system as a whole that some properties have a grinder pump versus gravity flow.
Well, I think that Melissa um commented one time that there were, because she, Melissa Marle was on council when the sewer was put in and she said that there was some people that wanted a grinder pump, even though they didn't have to have a grinder pump. So that there is, there is some installations where they could have had a gravity system and people insisted that they have a grinder pump, so.
I'm one of those, and the reason why was because to have put in a gravity flow system from my house, I would have had to have replumbed the house because the septic system was in the front yard and the gravity was to the back. So, you know, that would have been a huge cost. And I, I, I think also it still would have had to have some pumps in some places where the configuration, where the um elevations changes were too uh dramatic, you know, within a block or two blocks to have everything done on a gravity basis. But all that's water under the bridge.
History.
Yes.
Um.
But there, I, what I was trying to point out in my memos, there's a variety of solutions to this problem. I, you know, I'm, I'm just opposed to a, you know, a, the shock of having residential customers take over that cost and.
Yeah, no, again, my apologies for that.
Well, and, and one other thing, Mr. Mayor, I think every time this issue has come up before the utility commission or the council before, grinder pump has been in the um agenda title and it's not here, and I think we'd have outrage that.
Yeah, again, it's because it really wasn't supposed to be about grinder pumps. So, um, okay, let's do this, let's put a pin in this one. Um, let us go back, uh, we'll put current language back related to the grinder pump stuff. Um, I'm gonna add some uh clarity about it not being in, the pump itself not being indoors. We'll look at s, the other zones to also reference. Um, also may do something around, we have a reference to the public works director, uh, but we probably need a reference to our um director of development or some sort of bui- building official for new build. Um, we'll look at your memo, Ms. Brown, and probably add something about the um, a, a fee if determined. If it broke because of misuse. Anyway, we'll, we'll kinda make some of those changes.
And then add commercial, hospital, other use stuff.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll do that too. Um, so let us w- work on that and kinda bring you something back. Um, if it's a little bit more finely tuned, if that works.
Sounds great.
Okay, with that, we will move off of agenda item number fifteen, taking no action. And it is nine oh seven. Maybe a record.
Move to adjourn.
You have a motion to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say no, being four ayes, no nays, you are adjourned.